Okay, the, um, the meeting is called to order. Oh, hold on one second. Okay, we're fixing, nope, there's much feedback. Okay, nope. Excuse our technical difficulties. Hello, nope. Hello? Test, nope, still going. It does sound like a, like a s- announcement system. Hello, nope. That's gonna make the meeting really long if we leave that on, y'all, so we're trying to turn it off. Hello, nope?
Thanks for your patience, everybody.
Yes, sorry. Luckily, we're only a couple minutes behind right now. Hello? It's a feedback, yeah. Is it off? No? Yeah, we're good, okay. Yes, there's only one of me, no. Okay, um, the meeting, thank you for your patience, everyone. The meeting is called to order at 6:35 PM. Um, the first item on the agenda is nomination and election of officers. Uh, we do not need a motion, just names of the people you would like to nominate for the position. It's not on here. We are missing Judah and Meredith, though, that's it for, in case people are wondering who was, um, but everybody else is here. So we do not need a motion, just the names of people you would like to nominate for the position of Budget Committee Chair. Does anyone wish to make a nomination?
I mean, I feel like it's a little tacky to nominate myself, but if nobody else will, sure, I'll nominate myself, Andrew Freeborg.
I'm used to not being able to nominate people, so I don't know if I was supposed to. Is there anybody else that would like to make a nomination?
I will also nominate Andrew so that it feels a little less tacky for you.
Thanks, Trace. Okay, hearing no objections or further nominations, the nominations are closed. Oh, I assume you accepted your nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the nominations are now closed. And, um, we can appoint through, via unanimous consent, which I think would be the way to go this evening. Um, and so congratulations on, um, your role of Chair of the Budget Committee for this year. I am now turning the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. And now we gotta do all that again for a Vice Chair. Uh, once again, do not need a motion, just the name of the people that you would like to nominate for the position of Budget Committee Vice Chair. Reminder that the Vice Chair pretty much only has to take over my duties should I not show up or be incapacitated in any way. So you probably won't really have to do anything, so don't be afraid.
Chair, I ju- I would just like to note that traditionally it has been a Budget Committee.
Yes, I was about to say, is usually a citizen member. Uh, it's not required, but that is, uh, custom. Any volunteers? Again, you, you, there is a ninety-nine point nine percent chance you will not have to do a darn thing. Okay, with that, uh, I will go ahead and nominate Tony Vandermeer for Vice Chair. And are there any objections or any other names that wish to be thrown into the hat? All right, uh, with that, the nomination is closed. I will, uh, once again, uh, seek unanimous consent to approve Tony as Vice Chair. Okay, congratulations. All right, so at this point, I would like to invite Superintendent Nos to present the budget message.
All right, well, um, as I get ready to share my budget message with all of you, I would just wanna take a moment to thank you, um, particularly our citizen members for being willing to, um, be on our Budget Committee. There are years when we are able to make additions to our, um, programs, and there are difficult years like this where that's not the case. And at the same time, I know that that brings other, um, emotions and feelings in that responsibility as members of our community. So I really do appreciate your willingness to help and participate. Um, we need that, um, support, and we need, um, community to be involved, so thank you for doing it, um, in this difficult and challenging budget season. Now I'll go ahead and start my message. I submit for your consideration the proposed budget for the Creval School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026, and provide context for the challenging fiscal landscape in the years beyond. While this budget includes reductions, we continue to prioritize specials at our elementary schools so all our students have music, art, library, and/or physical education every day. Over thirty-five honors, AP, and dual-credit courses in math, language arts, social studies, science, world language, and career and technical education, or CTE. CTE programs including automotives, culinary health sciences, engineering, carpentry, digital arts and design, computer science, child development, and studio arts, ensuring all students learn to read using high-quality instruction grounded in the science of reading. A dual-language program gets grades K through twelve, and a well-rounded education thanks to diverse opportunities like theater, outdoor school, orchestra clubs, STEM and math nights, art shows, and athletics. The, this budget reflects our commitment to cultivating a district where all students belong and are supported to thrive, engage in learning in the community, and be prepared for success. It invests in provided rigorous, relevant, and engaging learning experiences that honor unique identities and lead to future goals while also fostering the wellness of students, families, and staff. Assessing the current climate and budgetary constraints. Despite successfully addressing an eight-point-two million, million deficit in the twenty-four-twenty-five budget, the upcoming budget cycle forces ongoing financial pressures, resulting in a new shortfall of two-point-nine-eight million. Strong fiscal reserves coupled with state and federal funding, including high-school success, student investment account, IDEA, and title funds, have enabled us to enhance student services and expand our team in recent years to address growing academic and social emotional needs. Despite these efforts, declining enrollment and insufficient state funding to cover rising operating costs pres- present ongoing obstacles. The costs of doing business go up every year due to inflation with the majority of our funds going to payroll and benefits. Furthermore, the critical needs of our students persist even as the resources to meet them diminish. The twenty-five-twenty-six proposed budget strategically utilizes of our available resources to directly address these challenges. Excuse me. State funding. In Oregon, the issue of inadequate state funding in public education continues to pose significant challenges. The state school fund, a combination of state and local funds, makes up about eighty-five percent of our general fund revenue. It includes local property taxes, some county and state grants, and a seventy percent reimbursement for home-to-school transportation. The state school fund is appropriated biennially by the Oregon Legislature. At the time of the proposed budget, the allocation for the next biennium, twenty-five to twenty-seven, is undetermined. While the proposed state school fund increases, it will leave us approximately two-point-eight million short. While the proposed state school fund increases, it will leave us approximately two-point-eight million short of what we need to maintain our current service level. To adequately address our budgetary needs in our current declining enrollment situation, we would need a state school fund allocation of approximately twelve-point-two billion, which is about eight-hundred million short of what we anticipate receiving. Over the last decade, the state of Oregon has seen an increase of seventy-two percent, thirteen-point-five billion, in general fund revenues. And the proportion of those dollars invested into education has decreased by nine percent. Schools are tasked with supporting a wide range of students and family needs beyond core education, such as medical care, mental health supports, and addressing food and housing insecurity, but are not funded to provide these services. Federal funding. Federal funds make up about six percent of our overall budget, totaling about ten million annually. These funds are critical in support programs such as Title I for high-poverty elementary schools, professional development, language instruction, student support and enrichment, Indian education, child nutrition programs, services for students with disabilities, and Medicaid billing for services that take place in our schools. All federal funds, with the exception of Title VI, are passed through the state or another state agency. There is uncertainty about if and how these federal programs will be funded in the future, and any changes would be impactful to our overall budget. Our operating expenditures. Our expenditures are continually outpacing our revenues, with the most significant impact to increasing yearly operation expenditures being staffing, which makes up over eighty percent of our budget. We strive to offer competitive pay slightly above the average of comparative districts to attract and retain high-quality staff. Another significant cost is the public employee retirement system, or PERS, which imposes significant budget constraints due to escalating required contribution rates. Additionally, inflation impacts the cost of operating our schools, much like it impacts the cost of living for families. Enrollment. Declining enrollment is a significant factor impacting our budget. As the largest funding source, the state school fund is distributed on a per-student basis. Based on recent birth rates, statistics, and high housing costs in Crevalle, we believe this trend will continue for several more years. Our enrollment for the twenty-four-twenty-five-twenty-six school year is projected to be five-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one students, which is two-hundred-and-thirty-seven fewer than the current year. We are seeing much smaller kindergarten cohorts, three-hundred-and-three projected for twenty-five-twenty-six, compared to the twelfth-grade cohort, five-hundred-and-seventy-two projected for twenty-five-twenty-six, that are graduating out of the system. Decreasing birth rates are not unique to our district, mirroring trends observed across Oregon and the United States. Student enrollment is projected to decrease from six-thousand-seventy-six in the twenty-three-twenty-four school year to five-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty by twenty-eight-twenty-nine. This decline is expected to stabilize around the twenty-eight-twenty-nine school year, as larger student cohorts graduate. While there is movement of students to and from private schools within the district boundary and a smaller net transfer out to other public districts, less than one percent of total enrollment in the current year, the primary driver of declining enrollment are the declines in birth rates and housing. Housing. The housing crisis in our community is a pressing issue that requires urgent attention. The high cost of living makes it difficult for families with children to move to or remain in Crevalle. Based on a twenty-three report, about seventy-two percent of families were unlikely to find a single-family home to purchase in their price range within Crevalle. In addition, a significant portion of families cannot afford two, twenty-four percent, or three-bedroom apartments, thirty-seven percent. The production of single-family homes has not recovered from the two-thousand-and-eight recession, exacerbating the supply and demand issues and driving up prices. A recent demographic report indicates that for every four single-family homes built between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-three, the Crevalle School District gained one student. Similarly, the district gained one student for every five multifamily units constructed. Here's a summary of the proposed budget. The budget proposal includes a total investment of one-hundred-and-eighty-two-point-six million for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year, a slight increase from the previous year's budget. The general fund represents sixty-three percent of the twenty-five-twenty-six proposed budget for all funds and accounts for most of the district's operating activities, except those required to be accounted for in another fund. General fund revenues come from two main sources, local property taxes and the state school fund. Budgeted general fund current resources total one-hundred-and-fifteen-point-one million, an increase of two-point-six million or two-point-three percent from twenty-four-twenty-five. The majority of the increase in general fund resources is due to typical increases in property taxes and an increase in state funding per pupil due to statewide enrollment declines. In addition, the district has implemented several savings strategies in the current and previous fiscal year in preparation for the projected budget deficit. Budgeted general fund current requirements total one-hundred-and-fifteen-point-one million, an increase of two-point-six million or two-point-three percent from twenty-four-twenty-five. The general fund includes ten-point-eight million that funds approximately sixty-six FTE provided by the local option levy, which voters renewed in May of twenty-two. Based on the local option levy, are students experiencing smaller class sizes and receive specialized instruction in physical education, music, and art. The local option levy also provides students with more access to counseling and social work, services, vocational and technical education programs, and extracurricular activities. School Board Policy DA provides guidance regarding the financial objectives for managing general fund reserves. Those objectives include establishing a sustaining, sustainable level of programs, protecting the district from unnecessary borrowing to meet cash flow needs, providing prudent reserves to meet unexpected emergencies, protecting against catastrophic events, and meeting the uncertainties of state and federal funding. As outlined in the policy, all general fund contingency and reserve accounts are budgeted to achieve the minimum level required. In conclusion, the proposed budget for twenty-five-twenty-six and the projections for subsequent years reflect the significant financial challenges facing our district due to declining enrollment, inadequate state funding, uncertain federal funding, and rising operating costs. Despite facing substantial projected deficits requiring corrective action, our district remains dedicated to prioritizing student success and well-being and providing exceptional educational experiences. To address these challenges, the district is actively engaged in long-range planning. We are currently conducting a demographic study to analyze enrollment trends and projections, and a facilities assessment to evaluate the capacity and future of our schools. This data will be presented to the school board in August of twenty-twenty-five to inform future decisions, as all options regarding potential redistrictation, consolidation, or school closure will be considered at that time. We want to assure the community that all current schools will remain open for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year. Together with the support of the Budget Committee and the Crevalle community, we will remain firmly committed to our mission to cultivate a thriving educational environment where every student has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your consideration and support, as we work towards a brighter future for our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Nos. At this point, I would like to invite Finance Director Lauren Wolf to present the budget highlights.
So good news is, here's our agenda, and we've already hit items one and two, so we're on our way. I will be giving a presentation of the overall budget. We will have time for public comment. There will be time for deliberation and questions, requests for more information, and then potentially committee action if you see fit. I want to bring up the meeting norms again, just to center us before we get started. We are agreeing to focus use of meeting time orderly, procedure, consideration for district staff capacity and resources, and respectful deliberation and conversation. Again, this is a slide you've seen at least three times now, but wanted to remind you of your Budget Committee roles and responsibilities. The key responsibilities of the Budget Committee are to hear the budget message, which we just did from Superintendent Nos, hear and consider public comment, which we will do in a little bit, discuss and revise the budget as needed. It's a bit of a technical process, so if you are wanting to do that, I can walk you through the steps when we get to that point. And then eventually approve the budget and approve the tax rate and levy amount, which those two factors play into the assumptions for the budget, and you do have a sheet that has the language for that if you see fit. The committee does not set salaries, benefits, or contract terms, set staffing levels, or organizational structure, decide if a program or service will be funded, or make or alter district goals or policies. Those are all either operational in nature, which happens from the superintendent, or from the school district side on that policy and goal setting. Okay. Now to the budget summary. So we're looking at here, the budget at a glance for all of our funds. As you can see, the general fund is where the majority of our operations take place. We also have the two-hundred level, the special revenues funds, which make up our grants, the three-hundred, which is our debt service. We have two current large debt obligations, which are for the general obligation bonds in twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty, as well as our PERS unfunded actual liability debt service, which we have a couple more years to pay off, which will be great when that's no longer on the books. You can see that the capital projects fund has completely that orange. You're not seeing any orange. We don't have a budget there. You will see the data presented in the budget document as we do present three years' worth of actuals. And so that is there. You can see that that was a huge portion of our budget back in twenty-one-twenty-two as we went through the bond project, but as those funds were spent, that fund diminished. Then lastly is our six-hundred internal services fund, which you can see there. So for our major assumptions and trends on the resources side, we have the state school fund at eleven-point-four billion. As mentioned in the soup's message, we do not have a committed allocation from the state, and that is fairly normal every other year. So this budget is assuming eleven-point-four based on the governor's recommended budget, and then the budget that the co-chairs came out with. And I'm sure one of you will ask me a question about that later. But we did receive a state economic forecast that came out yesterday that was less than promising. So that's our assumption. That doesn't mean that that's what we're going to get. We are assuming an enrollment based on our data of five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight students. That turns into an extended ADMW, which is the factor that the state school fund uses to calculate our portion of six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven-point-nine-three. And that is really based on average daily membership, which is why we get that decimal point. Obviously, we don't have a point-nine-three of a student, so that's how that works. And they actually take your highest ADMW from the current year and the year prior, which is where we get to that extended ADMW. So we will be operating off of this current year's number versus the actual number for twenty-five-twenty-six. Property taxes, up about two-point-nine percent. That's fairly stable in Benton County. And the local option levy, up three percent. Student investment account allocation at six-point-seven million. Again, not feeling super confident in that number after the revenue forecast is that's largely funded by lottery funds, and that fund was down at the state as well, but that is what this is based on. And then a beginning fund balance of twenty-five-point-six million. And I do think it's important to note that that is not all general fund. We are talking about all funds. And so sixteen-point-eight of that is general fund. There's a couple million dollars in special revenues, and then the remaining of that in the insurance reserve fund for both classified and certified, as well as our risk management internal services fund. Federal funding. I promised I would bring those assumptions out separately at this meeting. I wanted to just restate that we don't have allocations yet. We have heard that the state did receive their Title I allocation last week, so that's promising. Or I think this week, we intend to have it next week, and we are assuming fairly flat funding on that. For this budget proposal, the assumption is a twenty-five percent cut to federal grant programs, which is just under a million dollars with the elimination of Title II. We have, the federal funds, the federal calendar is different than our state calendar, so they go October 1st through September 30th, whereas we go July 1 through June 30th. And we do have a percent carryover that we are allowed to carry over year to year, which we typically do because of the variability of the funding. And so we anticipate next year with all of our awards combined to have a carryover around seven-hundred-and-seventy thousand. So if you look at the overall budget impact next year for federal funds, it's only two-hundred thousand dollars. But that will be much more significant if we lose those federal dollars for twenty-five-twenty-six. So it's not like the conversation is over. It's just that there will be a bit of a year in transition where we can smooth that trend. Great. So now, this is an overall, again, all-fund summary of resources. You can see fifty percent of our resources are our local funds, and that's primarily those tax revenues. Both to keep in mind that that's dollars coming in from property taxes, from the local option levy, and then as well as the bond for the general obligation capital improvements. We also have our intermediate sources, which is really small. That's some county sources. Our state sources is thirty-one percent, largely the state school fund, plus student investment account, high-school success, and some other smaller grants. Our federal source is there at around six million. And then our other sources, which is primarily fund balance that's being brought forward from the prior year in all funds. I did note the major variances there. And again, just to tie this back to the document, you will see that on page fifty-nine, notated for the variances by major source. So intermediate, we say our major variances, we generally note at either a million dollars or ten percent, but I have listed them for the sources there. On the requirement side, these are our major assumptions and trends for all funds. Step increases for all employees, that is in alignment with the contracts that we have. We have cost-of-living adjustments for all employee groups, certified four percent, classified five percent, and four percent for our non-rep group. We have insurance contributions of an additional fifty dollars per month for all employees. Payroll expense is anywhere from thirty-eight-point-five to forty-three-point-two percent. That number is variable based on if we have tier-one or tier-one tier-two employees versus an OP-SERP employee. And I suppose I could have put a lower number on there as well for our retirees, but that's a very low number of our actual staff that go into that category. And then I put the Consumer Price Index inflationary rate of two-point-six percent on all other expenses, not based on necessarily the budget, but our projections for where we anticipate to end up in this current year. And then how that plays out in the budget is here. You can see that our salaries and associated payroll costs make up over half of our budget. The next largest category is our other objects, and that's generally because of, that's where we pay for our insurance premiums, which is about twenty-one million dollars for health insurance for employees, as well as the other objects for just our regular general liability, property liability, those sort of things. So that is a large category. And then the purchase services is the next one at about ten percent of our overall budget, just over eighteen million dollars. And then you can see the other small categories there as well. Just like on the resources, I've noted the major variances there. That is on page sixty-seven in the way that I presented it. There's also There's also another variance page on page 73 that breaks it down by more detailed function level, if you would like to see that as well. And then the next piece is, and again, this was a question that came up from Sammy, but also that we had talked about in the orientation, is how are we aligning our resources to our goals and that strategic plan? And as I mentioned, I hope to have this be a larger section in our document where we can put some more information in the future. But based on the current budget software and how that all worked, it wasn't something that we could pull off this year, but I did want to bring it up in this format to talk about that. So for our first goal, goal one of excellent learning experience. And just to state, again, it's stated in the board goals, but these are not in priority order, they're just in an order. And so excellent learning experience, there's several different examples on those. We have our data teams, our MTSS, which is multi-tiered support systems or systems of support, either way, SNS. And then if you see in parentheses where there's the numbers, those are the function codes. So you can tie that back to where it is in the budget document so that you can see that. Not all of them I can pull out separately because they're coded at a more detailed level than function and object, which is how the budget's presented. So if you don't see it, that is why. We have assessment tools. I put an example of Amplify. I know we have others, but I can't name them all. We have instructional staff development. You'll see the functions listed there. Special education programming. Our 21st Century Programming, which is pages in Pahinas. I think it was probably two board meetings ago, they did a presentation. It's a super cool after-school program that's really moving the dial for kids. So if you missed that, that's on YouTube. You can go back and learn some more about that. We have the Science of Reading, which is professional learning for teachers. We have curriculum. We have a math professional learning. We have a math TOSA and an early literacy TOSA. And both of those individuals provide high-quality in-house professional learning in those two areas so that we're not having to pay like an outside entity necessarily to do those. And those are two positions that are helping really move the dial in both of those areas. So for equitable systems, we have a list of things here. Our dean of students, especially at elementary, play a large role in, I think, that for our kids and helping support them so that they're able to be at school and do their best. We have the Youth Truth Survey that we just completed about a month ago, probably. So we have that. We have interpretation and translation services to make, to, in an attempt to make things more accessible for all of our families. We have school equity TOSA's and equity teams. And I should have said TOSA, we talk in a lot of acronyms, but TOSA is teacher on special assignment. That is what that stands for. So that is a licensed certified teacher in that role. We have school pride club advisors. We have students advocating for equity, that's our SAFE teams. Coaches and mentors. We have Delta, DEDI, and other advisory groups as well that fit within that category. For goal three is relevant and engaging learning. Alternative education, instructional media, our career technical education programs. I think we have about 14 of those, I want to say, right now. I cannot list them off as quickly as Nikki can, but we do have a lot. Our dual-language immersion TOSA. We have advisor program and major clarity, which is helping getting students ready for life after high school. We have summer programming. We have DLI programs. We have elementary enrichment, music, art, and PE. We have green team leaders and our sustainability specialist. And then for the last goal of healthy communities, we have our socio-emotional learning curriculum, health services, which includes several different positions within that. We have our mental health program. Again, with interpretation and translation, some of these things obviously fit into more than one category. So I did not repeat them unintentionally. Our athletics and extracurriculars, we have community gatherings for Delta and DEDI. We have our student support teams, SST, which is another acronym that we use, you'll see. And school counselors. We have attendants and our social workers. We have staff services. We have our Youth Truth Family Workshops, which I think happened yesterday. That was an example of that. As well as our student and family advocates that are working very hard in our schools every day. So those are some examples for those goal categories. And I hope to expand upon that in future years on how we can document that actually in the budget, but work in progress. Okay, so we do have, next is public comment. So we can, if anyone has questions specific to the data presented, if you want to ask, but we also have time for public comment or we have discussion after public comments. So this is strictly questions.
Go ahead, Sammy.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren, for the last few slides about the alignment of the school board goals and the budget. And I want you to maybe highlight the percentages for each goal based on the listening and learning. What those percentages are, what is it out of what?
Oh, on the slides. So when we did the listening and learning survey, one of the questions was how, how well do you think the district's resources are aligned to their goals? And so these percentages are based on that. So 78% alignment on excellent learning experience, 91% alignment on equitable systems, 77% alignment on relevant engaging learning, and 87% alignment on healthy communities. So I don't believe that we currently have metrics that we could use to compare, but I, we have to start somewhere. So this would be some baseline data that we can then check next year to see how our investments are working for students and families.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else with an immediate clarifying question, which is good because I was gonna be like, let's maybe try and hold off on a lot of those since we have a lot of people here. How many people signed up for comment? Four, okay. Well, then, let's get onto that. Let me read a little bit here first. So we will now open the public comment period. "We value the lived experiences of students, families, staff, and community, and we welcome public comment as necessary and important part of the work that this committee does." "The complete guidelines for public comment are available on the registration table at the back of the, back of the room and are electronically attached to the agenda for this meeting, but there are a couple important points. When it is your turn to speak, please come forward, have a seat right there, and direct your comments to the committee. Before you start your comments, please state your name for the record and state whether or not you reside within the Corvallis School District boundary. You will have three minutes to make your comments. I will alert you when you have 30 seconds left and when your time is up. The lights on the counter there in front of you will turn from green to yellow at the 30-second mark and from yellow to red at the end of your three minutes. I will give you a little bit of time to wrap up. If you are in the middle of a sentence, I won't cut you off in the middle of a sentence. But I would ask you then at that point to wrap up your thoughts quickly, out of respect for everybody's time. Following your comments, the committee will have three minutes to ask clarifying questions, but we are not able to engage in conversation or debate. If committee members would like to revisit a topic or issue brought up during public comment, they may do so at the appropriate time in the agenda. Please recall that the role of the budget committee is different than that of the school board. Specifically, the budget committee cannot set salaries, benefits, or contract terms, cannot set staffing levels or change the district's organizational structure, make decisions regarding programs or services offered or funded, or make or alter district goals or policy. Please additionally note that the proposed budget is balanced as required by state law. So if you are commenting regarding a request for an increase or a decrease to budget expenditures, it would be helpful if you could also identify a corresponding decrease and vice versa." And with that, who's up first?
There we go. All right, well, thank you. It's been a long time. Good to see everybody here. Just here to speak to some of the newer members of the budget committee just provides some experience from when I was sitting in the exact same place as you are. Considering the lean nature of the budget this year, the unstable fiscal environment that we're in, and considering we had a very lean budget forecast yesterday up in Salem. But essentially, what I wanted to speak to for the newer members is just remember, your authority here is granted to you by the statutes of the state of Oregon. It's not derived from the district. It's not derived from the school board. And then all of your decisions regarding the budget document that's been presented already here today, keep everything related strictly to funding. You do have the power to make decisions. You do have the power to ask questions. Don't be like I was my few years not asking questions and remaining silent. Stakes are too high for this particular budget. To just provide, it's already been provided by Chairman Freeboard as far as the parameters surrounding what this committee can and can't do. But you'll find that you get a lot more done if you frame the questions correctly. So if you come in and you are looking at the budget, you don't feel that it meets the shared vision values of the school board, district, and the community, you do have the ability to ask for increases or decreases in funding. Framing a question like, let's just use one of the issues that's up right now is music for elementary school students. Framing the question to the district, what additional funding would be necessary to, in the 2025, 2026 budget cycle so that the service levels could be maintained as they were in the 2024, 2025 budget cycle? Always keep your questions related directly to the funding. You'll find the conversations will go much easier. You won't get as much pushback from the district or maybe some other sitting board members. But go with what's in your gut. Go with how you're viewing the goals. Go with what you think is right. Don't let anybody back you down from what you think needs to be done. Persist, be persistent. And if at the end of the deliberations, within the next couple of meetings, if you don't feel this budget document accurately reflects the shared vision values of the district, the board, and the community, vote no. You don't have to provide a yes vote. And you don't have to rubber stamp the document that's been presented today. Make sure that you are active and vocal during these deliberation periods. You're, you've been provided an awesome amount of authority granted to you through the statutes. Is that me blinking saying I'm done? All right, very good. Just remember, you do have a lot of authority, and that authority is provided to you through the state of Oregon, not through the board or the district. Thank you.
Hold up. First, could you again state your name for the record?
My apologies.
Whether or not you live in the district boundary?
My name's Richard Arnold, and I've lived within the district since 2006.
Perfect. Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Arnold? No?
Just a point of order. I, while I am really encouraged by the applause, I believe my understanding of public comments, if we would allow applause, we would allow boos, for example, or we would ask the audience to refrain from either. Just want to be respectful of every other person who wants to provide comments, how the chair would like to proceed.
While I do appreciate the applause for that, I think it is fair that, in the interest of that way, in case somebody provides testimony, that may not be the same as the prevailing opinions in the room, that we, for the sake of decorum, keep the applause to a minimum, please.
Sounds good.
And thank you, Mr. Arnold.
No, thank you, Mr. Freeboard.
All right, who's next?
Molly Verge.
All right, and once again, please make sure to state your name for the record and whether or not you live in the boundary.
Okay. My name's Molly, and I do live in the boundary. And my school's doing a musical this year, and I got Grace and Annie. And I'd just like to say that if you cut like music, like if this happened next year, you probably wouldn't, we probably wouldn't be able to do the musical because we wouldn't have enough time to practice it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, please keep the applause to a minimum. Hold, but just a second, does anybody have any questions for her? Oh, sure.
Grace, what school do you go to?
Bessie Coleman.
I think Sammy had one first and then Shawna.
I'm not sure if I captured the grade. Which grade are you in? Thank you.
I was gonna ask when your musical is performing and if the community can come and see it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. And again, for the record, please do not leave the seat and the microphone until the questions have been asked, so that way we can all hear and everybody who's watching on YouTube can hear as well. Thank you. Sure?
I just wanted to mention too that it's a public meeting law now in Oregon that things are, when it's like this, that's why we ask you to stay at the mic too. It's not, yeah, it's not to be intimidating or anything. We just want to make sure that we follow everything and everybody hears your voice too online.
And next up?
I brought props. It's on. Hello, I'm Chris Blacker. Good evening. We've lost hundreds of students in Corvallis, and somehow, we are still not talking about it. We hear a lot about housing prices and birth rates, and yes, those do affect enrollment, but slowly over decades. What's happening right now is different. It's immediate, and it's preventable. Given the past five, over the past five years, excuse me, enrollment in our schools is down about 724 students. That's the red line going down. But the number of school-aged kids in Corvallis not attending our schools is up to 751. Let me say that again. We've lost more students from our own city than we've dropped in enrollment. These families didn't leave due to housing costs, and the kids are still here. They're just choosing to go somewhere else. And that is not a guess. This is data from the Oregon Department of Education's Office of Finance and Administration, the same data we use for funding calculations and Title I allocations. This is a federal census data and verified state enrollment figures. This is our data. And how do we compare to other districts? Well, a lot of folks have mentioned the comps. We're dead last compared to all of our comps. We have the greatest rate of loss of students among all of them. And it's gonna get worse with the new data will be at minus 10%. How about compared to the rest of the state? And for dramatic effect, you'll see here, here's all the cities that are growing, all the way to the ones that start decreasing, and I have to do this to get to Corvallis. We're in the bottom 10% of all 94 districts in the state, number 85 out of 94. All the same data, all calculated the same way. And what was our response? Did we close the school responsibly? Did we go back to our good math program, or do we double down on a program that has failed us? Cut more, shrink more, raise class sizes, reduce access to libraries, limit art now slash music, and raise classes by another 20%? And then act shocked when more families leave? Doing the same thing over and over and over again, three years in a row, is not sustainability, it is not equity, it is insanity. So here's what we can do. We can stop the cuts, reject this budget, demand we adjust the budget responsibly. Demand, if needed, we use the reserves and pay back over three years of the savings from a school that we've just announced we're probably gonna be closing. Bethel School District did this last year. It worked, and they're only 45 minutes away. If we don't know how to do it, the new PTA of Latisha Carson, or treasurer of the PTA, excuse me, and we approve a meal. We'll actually pay for you to go down and have lunch with Bethel, and you can talk to them and figure out, how did they do this? How were they able to not cut services, not raise class sizes, and close the school, pay it back over three years? They did deficit spending for two or three years at $1.4 million. We're asking for about $3,280,000, I guess, out of the 6.6 rainy day fund. We can easily pay that back with earmarked $1 million from the savings. And I just don't want to hear any more excuses that we can't, we can't because we didn't, read it once, read it twice, and do the merry-go-round. We can do this. Other districts can do this. If we cut this much more, we will lose more families, and this problem will just become that much worse. This is a death spiral that we're engaging. We must stop. So please, no more excuses. It is time to act. The data is clear. The public is engaged. Now is your last opportunity to try to fix this. So please, I ask you, I beg you, please consider using the reserves, do not cut these services, and keep our families in our town, in the district.
Thank, applause, please keep it to a minimum. Again, I appreciate that everybody appreciates his comments, but in the interest of maintaining decorum, we do need to keep that to a minimum. Does any members of the board have any questions for?
Hi, Chris, thank you for your coming here tonight with your comments. I was getting a little bit lost on like the graph that you held. Was that population?
So this is the rate of loss of students, so you can notice down here, sisters is killing it.
Okay, I don't need the, I don't need the, it just was exactly because you went through a bunch of numbers real fast, that way it was really clear for the community.
I know, I only had three minutes, last time I got cut off, so I wanted to run.
So it's always like, and you've been, you said right now, like, closing a school like Bethel, how does that immediately save money? And how, where would the staff go from that school?
It doesn't immediately, that's why you have to use the reserves. So you use the reserves to cover, it's kind of like a step-down system. Right now, we're just going straight down the hill. Every year, we just keep sliding and sliding, and every year, we're losing more and more parents. Instead, you maintain a base level of services, keeps class sizes where they were, or try to lower them, keep art, music, and all those things where they, I would say even bring back art in library for the elementary schools, a lot of parents left because of that, and you keep the services, then you close a school, like next year, we will close a school. Like Bethel, for example, announced Clear Lake Elementary was closing a year in advance, and said, "We're gonna use reserves to cover that," and then when we close the school, we earmark a million dollars each year to pay back what we've spent. It takes three years, I believe, for our superintendent's plan. So that, you know, if we get, so an example would be like, just pick a school, doesn't matter which one, but let's, I won't even know the name. It's 3.8 million that we spend on that school, plus all of the funds from support services. That's a big thing right now. We spend $71 million in this new budget on support services instead of $64 million on instruction. I looked at like 12 other budgets doing all this data, and there is almost no other district that's that upside down. Most spend 90, 100 million on instruction and maybe 30 on support services, and that support services is buildings. It's maintenance, insurance, and transportation, and all the associated costs. If you close one school, you will lower those big three-line items in the support services budget by 5, 10%. So that's where you save the money.
Well, that's where I was asking where the staff would go.
Staff would be redistributed. You don't have to cut a single staff, so like, you know, the estimate from the folks I've talked to, one to one and a half million, maybe up to two million, depending on the school. So I would recommend, take the year, evaluate every single school from a financial standpoint, how much do we save if we close it? And also, what can we do with it? Can we release it out? Like Clear Lake Elementary became Clear Lake Community Center. Can we, a lot of folks think that the hospital would buy it, because they need an elderly center. And so I think there's lots and lots of options like that. Do that full analysis, give it to the public, and say, what's the best decision?
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure I caught it, because again, we have a short amount of time, a lot of things. It wouldn't do anything now, it would be in the future, and we don't-
It would do something for you now, let me, I can be clear. You could put it on as, like, from a budgetary standpoint, it would be future revenues that you would know from the savings.
But those aren't guaranteed, those are projected, right?
They are, because they come right from the three direct support services line items. So you could say, this is how much we spend on maintenance at Mountain View, Letitia Carson, wherever. This is how much we spend on technology services, how much we spend on transportation, on insurance.
Okay, we're not supposed to debate, I was just asking, I was trying to ask you a question to clarify, so I didn't get to do that, because it's not, we're not supposed to debate, so.
My apologies, very new to this.
I wish I could ask the remaining part of that question.
I'm happy to extend time if you want to ask more questions.
We're not allowed to, thank you though.
Unfortunately, we do have to keep moving. Okay, we did have one person who wasn't called, but let's see if they're here now. All right, since I don't think you were in the room earlier, please state your name for the record and whether or not you live in the boundary, and your three minutes begins now.
Hi, I'm Vibha Javali, I'm a junior at Crescent Valley. I live in Corvallis, and yeah, I live in the boundaries. Good evening, again, I'm Vibha Javali, I'm a junior at Crescent Valley High School. I actually have the AP Physics exam tomorrow at 8:00 AM. It's the hardest AP exam to pass nationwide. But instead of studying for it tonight, I'm here fighting for my school, my teachers, and my peers. Having lived in Corvallis for the past eight years, I can attest to the strengths of the school district. My journey started at Mountain View in 4th grade, then at Sheldon, finally, I'm now at Crescent Valley. I sit here to urge every single member of the board to reject this budget. More cuts means bigger class sizes, overworked teachers, and fewer opportunities. This will only drive more families away. In the past five years, we've already lost 10% of our students, pushing Corvallis into the bottom 20% of all Oregon districts. And in the bottom 10% among districts in our size. That trend is neither normal nor should it be acceptable. I sit here as a junior with no incentive for this change to occur. My time has already passed. By this time next year, I would be close to graduating. So I ask you, please, please, please reject this budget, or if not, just spend more time scrutinizing it. No more excuses, no more committees about committees, no more consultants charging us while our students are actively losing out. The community, the same one that you want to calm down, is begging you to protect our kids. We aren't naive. We see through the admin cuts that are occurring. The repackaging, the same sham rhetoric that gets passed around town within hours, is quite frankly eerily reminiscent of the rhetoric of the alarming administration that we're under. I urge you to reject this budget, represent the values and the needs of your electors, and keep our administrators accountable. I ask this from the bottom of my heart. Not for me, not for the high schoolers, not even for the community, but for the 303 kindergarteners who are going to join our district next year. They deserve better. Thank you.
Please, please remain seated, just in case. Do any members of the committee have any questions? Sammy?
Thank you, Vibha, for the eloquent speech and comments, I appreciate it. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, you mentioned that Corvallis School District's at a certain bottom, in a bottom order. Is that in terms of performance, or cuts, or population?
When we compare, so, okay. Our school district, quite frankly, when compared to other school districts our size, when we compare to other school districts across the state, isn't even facing the same type of crisis. We're actually doing much better. Except for some reason, we seem to be making more cuts, increasing salaries in places where we shouldn't be, and taking away more services than other districts that are facing huge problems.
Thank you, so that you, what you're saying is, we are at a certain, at the bottom of the districts in terms of the magnitude of cuts? Is that what you're sharing?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. The second question I have is, as you saw there in the presentation of alignment between community values and the school board goals and appropriation, there were some examples of alignment, and you mentioned your request to scrutinize the budget in order to avoid the cuts. Is there certain investments that you believe needs to be cut in order to compensate for existing cuts?
Sammy, quite frankly, you know, every year, we talk about this community alignment that happens, but it's clear that the community is upset. I simply ask you to spend more time looking deeper and deeper into what we can do to protect our kids first. Try everything possible, please. We are begging you, we have been begging you. This is what our community wants, and this is what we want you to represent.
Thank you, Mr. Javali. No further questions.
Anyone else?
Vibha, I know that you know this from being, participating with the board. When it gets to the time in June, if we're not to an agreement on the budget, like, if we don't pass it, what do you think we should do, like?
I think that-
If that makes sense, because you're asking us to scrutinize it, but how long would, how long should we do that if we?
That, that is a benefit and a cost that you have to weigh yourself. Do our kids matter enough to you to take that time? That's the question.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is because when they were presenting earlier, if we, we won't have funding next year if we don't present it, and so that's, that was why I was asking, it wasn't to argue, thank you.
People are getting harmed right now, and I'm just asking you to look at what our community is asking, we've been asking.
Thank you. I can't, we can't debate, but I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and that is all we had for people signing up for comment. So at this point, the public hearing is now closed. And we will open it back up for committee discussion, questions, and requests of staff for more information. So who would like to go first? Really? Nobody has any questions? Okay, I was gonna say, that would be a first. Go ahead, Sammy.
I will ask some questions in a random order of priority, however, Lauren, I would like to ask you, in terms of cuts, I heard from Portland, there are approximately 300 layoffs planned, 200 teachers. Do you have a gauge on the proportionality, of course, between Corvallis and its comparators, or Corvallis across the state, if we would normalize on ADMW or anywhere? Are we cutting more than other school districts, or are we consistent in what we're projecting? And I know everybody's presenting their budgets right now.
No, I don't, I have not looked at the comparator districts and how much they're cutting and compared that. I'm not sure how relevant that is. What I do know is that we, districts across the state are in a similar situation. I met with ESD finance directors, everybody within Lynn Benton and Lincoln County today, and everyone's in the same boat. We also know that there are districts that still have not announced their layoffs. Timing is different by contracts. So I, right now, to be honest, I'm focusing on what's happening in our district and how we move forward. And so no, I don't have a prepared list of comparators, but I do know this is not specific to us.
Thank you. Lauren, shall the Budget Committee discuss appropriation of funds to avoid cuts using their reserves? Policy DA mandates that a plan to replenish their reserves should be in place when the reserves are tapped into, and also, it does require, it does prevent us from doing an investment in ongoing expenditures, of course, for that purpose. So I'm wondering if you have comments around, could the Budget Committee have any discretion on tapping into their reserves? And is there any guidelines for us as we engage in a discussion that could discuss the reserves?
We can engage in the discussion about it. The Budget Committee doesn't have authority to tap into the reserves. They can provide that recommendation to the board, who then could authorize that if we, if the district leadership came and asked for that. I will say the same thing as I said last year, is that tapping into the reserves creates a compounded issue further down the road. What I would also say is our reserves don't cover one month of our expenditures. And I don't, I understand that that number looks large, because it would be large if it was in our own personal bank account. It does not cover one month of our expenditures, and when we are talking about uncertainty at the federal government, which then flows through to our state, I'm really concerned about our cash flow and when we may be able to bring in funds. And so that, that makes me feel really concerned if we were to do that. That's not my decision, and I will implement what needs to be implemented, but I would approach that subject with an abundance of caution.
Thank you. My next question, I believe it's education.
Can I make one more comment about that? Two districts in our state ran into cash flow issues within the last couple of years. Silverton and Newburgh, and in both cases, they had to make substantial mid-year corrections, which impacted the overall structure of those districts for a long period of time. One of the things that we are coaching new superintendents on alongside business managers is the importance of making sure that you have the cash flow to make the payments towards your employees. And so that is a caution that I would provide, is that we have seen that play out in multiple districts in Oregon over the last couple of years when cash flow becomes an issue.
Thank you.
Which then requires further borrowing, which I don't know any instances where you can borrow money without having to pay interest back. So again, compounding issue.
Thank you. Next question, I believe, I want to acknowledge first of all, the district's decision and commitment not to do any boundary or redistricting or closure next year, and emphasize that. So it is not an appropriation or decision probably the Budget Committee or the board is considering. However, as an educational understanding for us as we embark for following years, shall the Long Range Facility Planning Committee provide any decisions? Could you provide us with insights, does school closures that is associated with declining enrollment save any costs?
It does eventually. Interestingly enough, we've actually talked with Bethel several times and had lunch with them to talk about their plans and how they've gone about the system and learned from their experience, as well as learning from other districts. And it really does take about three years to see much of an impact on the cost savings. In the first year, it actually, for most, has cost more money to do the redistricting and consolidation enclosure on the front end. So knowing that, it's still, it's still something that needs to be on the table for sure, because we know that we need about that three-year runway and able to, and to really recognize the savings that would happen from that. That being said, I think we, there are things that we can do in order to start consolidating, which we have done, but not necessarily at the schools. You'll see that happening more at the district right now, where we're collapsing departments into each other in order to consolidate at this level as well. So I'm not sure if I answered your question, but it's, it's not super cut and dry for a year-one savings, and is not the answer for a short, in the short term.
Thank you. Yes.
So when we did meet with Craig and his team, there were some things that he shared with us that I think are important contextually. Like, one example is the board making a decision about the closure at Clear Lake, and then not making sure that there's like a care room staff at the school the next day, because of the impact that has on staff as they're making those kinds of decisions. So we've, so we've been really thoughtful in all those aspects that we, that he's been learning through his process. The length of time between the decision being made and the changes happening, that timeline is an important factor as well. So there are a lot of things that we've learned from him, and then also, there are other districts that are in similar situations right now across the state. This isn't, this isn't uniquely Corvallis. So we've also talked about bringing together a group of superintendents who are going through this, and figuring out, sort of learning from one another as we go through it. And that's also just not an Oregon thing. There are other states where districts are in similar situations, and learning from them as they go through the process as well. So we are, as I've said a couple of times, we have looked at demographics, we have looked at capacity, and we've looked at the the overall quality of our buildings. And that will be, again, on Wednesday, not next Wednesday, the following Wednesday, at Linus Pauling, we'll give people a chance to look at that data. And then when you return in August as board members for your retreat, we will then come forward, I'll come forward to you based on that work of the committee to talk about next steps.
So that's the 28th at 6:30 at Linus Pauling in the cafeteria.
Just as I think, Lou, Lou, you have a question?
Follow-up question about your discussions with Bethel. One, I'm just not that smart. If you close a school down, there's no savings for that first year. But then also, the connection to the testimony we did get from, from Mr. Blacker about, that was turned into a, a, a community hub and generated some, some revenue. So can you kind of clear that up for me, how that could not happen in our situation?
Yeah, so ultimately, depending, I mean, there's many different scenarios that you could go when you close a school. It's not just as simple as closing one school and then they just go somewhere else. We still would apply the formulas for enrollment in order for class sizes. So ultimately, most of those teachers are probably going to go and follow the kids. There will, there would potentially be some savings for certain positions like school building administrators, health room, front office staff, things of that nature. But we also do staff those based on a per-student formula and need. So there's that. Closing a building isn't as simple as just locking the doors. There's a lot of things that would need to take place. There's a lot of things that would need to take place and those things generally cost money in order to do something with all of the different systems in the building. There is some legal aspects of it that we would have to take care of. There, there's just a lot. And so until we actually redistribute those students, redistribute the staff, and then start adjusting back down based on the new configurations, based on the numbers for, that I've seen, the savings in a year is pretty minimal and it's offset by just the increase in cost in that next year anyways. Because we know that the data shows that costs do not stay the same year over year. And so it's not, it's not like this bucket of money that then becomes freed up that we're able to, to do a significant program change with. But over time, that does make sense and you ultimately end up do seeing a savings because what happens is if you stay with these really under-enrolled buildings, you're just sort of furthering the problem. And so you have to consolidate at a certain point, but it's not in one year that that just gets solved. Do you have anything else?
I think you've, you've covered it. At least, tell me if you have any new questions.
Okay. Thanks Vice Chair.
Thank you. So with the follow-up, were we able to discuss with them how the school that they did target to close down became a community hub?
Sorry, we didn't.
I got that one. So I actually, just in the last couple of weeks, I was, I was talking to him again about it. And he, they are some partner organizations that were looking for space. There, that building Clear Lake is placed in a, kind of in the middle of an area of town that, that is easily, easily accessible for folks. So they have some partnerships with Lane County, they have some connections with NWAACP, they have a couple of other groups that are also using the space. One of the challenges that he's finding is that, that takes a coordinated position to oversee those organizations using this space. And so he's, at least when I spoke to him last, he wasn't sure how to pull that off long-term. So he's still, because, he's still working through the details of that. And so while there are some people who are utilizing space, I don't think he sees it as a gain financially as much as he sees it as a community asset being used by community. And I think there's a distinction between those two things.
Yes, and I did have a, I'll just, I'll.
Sure.
Otherwise I'll get lost. I don't know if any of you were here back in the day when we closed Harding School, but we did. And I would like to see if there's any way we can look at the history of that, of how many families we lost that went to either private school or whatever because they lost their home school. Because that was really upsetting to a lot of families. And it was, I was at the school where the kids came to and it just, it took a lot of work and a lot of energy and there was a lot of loss. So I would like to see if there's any way we can look at history about what we, what families we lost during that time and what some of the numbers were around that and around the financial piece of that.
We'll do our best to find the numbers, but I do know a few historians in our community who were involved in that in one way or another. So there are folks I can, I can get some additional information from.
Okay Lou.
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if I should choose one, are we doing that or how are we doing that?
Just go and we'll see.
Okay. I did have a questionee comment about the consolidation. I know we're going to talk about that next year, so I kind of, it's kind of awkward even talking about that, but what I'm hearing is we would still lose staff. It just may not be like staff that people may see as much because it would be in the classrooms mostly or maybe health rooms. But I have a lot of, I put a lot of value on staff that do what's considered invisible labor, like janitors and food service workers and stuff like that. So I just wanted to say that, like I care about those staff too. And what I heard you all say is that even if they, we redistributed staff, we would still lose some.
Correct.
Okay. And a lot of conversations about the community center aspect, we have like more than one in Corvallis already. And I'm wondering how that would add if they're overtapped. So that's just things to think about as we're having those conversations. I didn't want that to get lost around like, would that fill a need and stuff like that? So it's not anything to answer right now, just a note thing. The two questions I did have, one is about salaries and one's about, about disabilities. So I don't know which one I should start with. Salaries, okay.
Either one.
Either one, okay. And I turned off my, my thing, oops. Okay, so it's on page 65, there we go, I can start with that. Or page, on 62, I noticed that the number, the FTE for licensed and classified did go down, but the, the salaries went up. So then, does that mean that it's, they're getting paid more, right? Is that, is that what it's translating to?
Yeah, the cost, the cost of the contracts is going up, so that equates to an increase as well as, that's, that's generally what that is. And we see that almost every year.
Okay.
Even when we're reducing.
Okay. I was, it was just noticeable that the amount that it went up by was a lot and, which is good, I think. And the number of, the other question that we've been asked a lot about is about admin and that cost didn't go down dramatically and there was a small decrease, but there's a bigger decrease in the licensed and classified, but the cost went way higher. So I was just noticing that trend. And so I just kind of had a question about that, which is also on, um.
Can I, can I say something related to that? So regarding the, those salaries, the reason why we see such a larger increase in licensed and classified is because their salary schedules include so many steps. So their salary schedules, I want to say maybe 16, 18-ish. I know the experts at the back, but they're around that level. And so every, for those employees, they get a step, which is anywhere, I think on the classified, it's 2.5% and for certified is 3.8. And so they're getting a step plus the COLA. And so that is what equates for that bigger difference in the growth there. And so for the non-rep salary, which is applicable to both the manager and administrators, there's only seven steps. And most of the time, by the time you are in an administrative or managerial role, you probably have close to seven years of experience. So most of the people on our salary schedule for both of those two groups of employees are capped at that step seven, so they're only getting the COLA. So for example, this year, the non-rep employees will be recognizing a 4% increase if they're on step seven. And for the equivalent step seven for our certified, so classified are getting an increase of 7.5% and certified employees will get an increase of 7.8% overall. So it's not just the COLA, it's a COLA plus step. That's why those have grown, if you look at the percentage a bit more.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make note that I appreciate that they're getting paid well.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not arguing otherwise, I'm just trying to put, give context for why that looks that way.
I get that. It was, it just stood out to me. It's all, it was more of a comment of like, I think that, I appreciate how that stands out. And the question related to this too, it's, when it comes to decreased staffing levels, I know we don't get to decide where salaries go at all. And there's been a lot of questions around, in particular, is it okay if I ask about yours, you're sitting in there. I was like.
It's, it's awkward and fine.
It's awkward and fine, okay. So like, for example, like increases to admin, increases in salary.
Yeah.
How many, would that save any of those positions if that was what was done with the money?
So are we talking about the $79,000 Ryan increase over X amount of years?
No, for one year, for next year.
Oh, well.
Because I didn't see a big increase in the admin at all.
So it's, yeah, no, it's less, the increase is less than one certified position.
So that would not help at all?
No.
Just, okay, thank you. And then the other question.
I wouldn't clarify that for all of the employees under the contract, not Ryan enough.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the totality of everybody's increase would not be enough for one? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
That's a very important point, thank you. And then the other one I had is on page, I have a lot of questions, oh my gosh. Okay, I'm trying to do this fast. The, on page 71, the, I seen a lot of the numbers for instruction for students with disabilities went down. And no, I've been doing a lot of state advocacy for the bills around special education and it does not look good.
Correct.
Based on the recent state budget and that's heartbreaking because we all need those fundings across Oregon. And I'm kind of wondering why that number went down in particular, knowing that the, what's ahead with the bills and if there's anything we can do that would potentially change that decrease.
Yeah.
Because that stands out to me too.
I just realized I forgot my ruler, which I usually bring to this meeting.
Yeah, because those are double lines. It took me a while too.
Um, yeah, so for that, that is generally related to the decrease in funding for IDEA, which is our federal special education grant. So we're recognizing a decrease in funding there of the 25%, which is what is impacting that number.
Was there anywhere else that could have prevented that decrease since it's already a, one that, like it's a necessary service and we're already not getting reimbursed like we should be from the state? Is there anywhere else that you look to help fill that gap a little bit?
Are you talking about in the budget, like to fill the staffing gap?
The, the, in general, the gap around the services for special education, yes.
Yeah. Well, based on the assumption of the budget, those, and the current costs that we're expecting this year, right? So the, this budgeted number for 24, 25 was the plan a year ago right now, which doesn't mean that that is what I'm actually projecting that we will spend on at this point as we are, you know, most of the way through the year. So then the numbers are based on that. So that doesn't necessarily mean that we're having maybe a decrease in spend from the current year, it's just looking at what we're actually doing, what our needs are for next year. We have rearranged some staffing and are looking at doing things a little bit differently, but we do not have any reductions in the FTE currently that I'm aware of in special education. It's just a sort of adjustment between actuals.
Okay.
I think the other, that we're spending is, is reflected here, but FTE is not going down, we're holding steady with FTE, both certified and classified when it comes to special ed. We've done that two years in a row, including last year's huge cut that we had to take. So we're holding steady.
And that's including like services with ESD too, that would.
Yeah.
That's separate, right?
That's, that's separate, it's in their, the tier one and tier two budget with ESD, but that's status quo.
Right, yeah, so it's not in this budget, right?
No.
Exactly, okay, that's, I was just like, yeah, it gets confusing sometimes.
One, one area of savings that we're anticipating is that we've been able to bring on more SLPs in person rather than using a service. So there is some savings that's going to happen there and that's just because we've been fortunate in being able to recruit SLPs from other districts.
Can we let people know SLP?
Speech and language pathologists, sorry.
And ESD is the Education Service District, just so people, I just, I'm trying to remind myself.
Lincoln Counties.
Yes. I was trying to remind myself and all of us that, yeah, we use our acronyms. Thank you so much.
I appreciate that.
I'll save my other questions for, if there's another round of questions.
I would say, just as a, a note, there's a list of acronyms in the back of the budget document that may be helpful for further, when you're looking at it on your own.
Teresa.
Thanks. So just kind of tagging on to the special education conversation, if you wouldn't mind, hopefully some people out there are watching and listening. Could you explain what you mean by the tier one, tier two ESD services? And what do we not house in-house that we contract with them? So I think that it's not always clear to people that we have some services that we are paying for directly and then some that we are getting elsewhere. And then, and then along those lines too. I know we're capped at 11%. I'm not sure if everybody understands what that means. So if you could explain what the 11% cap is and then also could you, do you know a number? If we weren't capped, if we got actually what we really spend, how much more would we be, would we have available to us? Lots of questions, I'm sorry.
Let me take the ESD one while you calculate that.
I can't, I'm not doing mental math here. You go ahead and do that.
So the way that those, the services work with our Education Service District is that money comes through this, from the state to our ESD. And the ESD serves, our ESD serves Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties. And the purpose of an ESD is really to provide services to districts that can't necessarily hire a position on their own. So a good example I give is an AUGCOM specialist, Augmented Communication Specialist, helping students who are non-verbal access oftentimes tools around language. And so a small district like CIO or LC doesn't need a full-time position, nor could they recruit and retain an AUGCOM specialist to come work in their district. So the ESD consolidates those resources and provides, helps to provide that service across the three counties. As superintendents, we meet to vote on a local service plan and the things we all agree on together are put in tier one, which means that all districts access those resources. Some examples of those are our student information system synergy is a tier one service that everybody contributes to. After those services are determined by the vote of the superintendents, then there's tier two dollars that are, sometimes come to districts in more of a, a choice that districts get to make individually. So in some cases, the ESD provides that service. And so we're using our tier two as Corvallis because we want this service, but not everybody else does. So sometimes the ESD provides that off, option for us. Like a school psychologist, we use some of our tier two funds because we need more school psychologist time to do testing for students with disabilities. So that's an example. Beyond that, in tier two services, if the ESD doesn't have that service, then the district can go out and do what is called flow-through and utilize those funds to provide that additional service. An example of that is our health navigators. We have three health navigators, one at Garfield, one at Lincoln, and one at Linus Pauling. They are bilingual individuals who are serving the community and connecting them to resources. We have an agreement with the county where the county is paying for half of those positions and we are paying for the other half of those positions. And the reason I can use tier two dollars to pay for that is because A, we had money left over out of tier one, and B, the ESD doesn't provide that service, so I can go look for that service elsewhere and use those flow-through dollars. So that is the way that the ESD funds. We have other ESTs across our state who have other formulas. The formula that we use in our ESD has been in place for eight years because I was, because I was, I voted on it at, at that time. And there have been some small changes over time around things like occupational therapists and physical therapists, but as a whole, that's how that service works. Yep.
Okay, I might not capture all the questions, but I think I remember some. So our sped cap, we're currently, the sped cap is 11% based on, in the state school fund, that's in statute. So there was a lot of active conversations during open session about either removing the cap or increasing the cap. Session is not over, but I feel like that's highly unlikely to happen based on the forecast that we received yesterday. What that means is that we have a percentage of students in our district on IEP and we get paid the additional weight that you will hear me talk about when we talk about ADM, average daily membership and with the little W, that's weighted. And so we receive extra funds for those students. We are capped at 11%. So if you have more than 11% of your students on IEP, you're not receiving the additional weight. He, you're not receiving the additional weight for those students um, at the same level as you are for the first eleven percent. Some districts, eleven percent is sufficient. I have not looked at um, all district data in, in the state. Um, recently, but I would guess that there's very few that that eleven percent is actually sufficient for at this time. Um, I'm sure that data is in, within the bill information.
The eleven percent was established um, around the same time as major five. So in the mid nineties. The eleven percent was the state average for districts across the state in terms of serving students with disabilities. Those numbers are higher now. Um, and those, that cap has never changed since the mid nineties. And we were hopeful that that would change in this session. And it had a lot of um, support from organizations that don't always um, sign up um, on the same side of decisions. However, based on what we learned um, on Tuesday, related to the state revenue forecast, which is. We were hoping it would be flat and it's down. Um, both this revenue forecast and the um, additional money we received from the cat tax. And so I, I don't anticipate at this point in time that that cap is going to change. Right now, we are advocating for the governor's number that we received back in December because we're concerned about. What's happening nationally and how that's impacting the state's um, revenues based on taxes. Um, as we move into tighter and tighter times, um, looking more and more like a recession.
And our actual sped cap, our, our actual sped percentage right now is around thirteen percent?
Sixteen point two.
Sixteen point two.
And so can you uh, ballpark, I know you're not gonna do mental math, but can anybody um, give us a sense? With that additional five percent represented to our real cost, what, what could we be talking about?
What was, we were talking about this number months ago and it is not one that has stayed in my head. Do you have it?
It's a number we, I want to be um, clear about, so I wanna get it to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think largely, I don't need it to um, decide whether I'm okay with how you've proposed things. I think it's more to make the point that um, what we receive to provide services for the students is not commensurate with our expense. And that the state has a responsibility. And as a district, we have to continue to decide if we're gonna meet their needs when the state's not. And I appreciate that this district has continued to meet the needs of those students. Um, and to prioritize that, even though the state is only willing to recognize eleven percent if the need is higher. So, thank you.
Just wanted to add that some districts in our area are up to like twenty-one percent. And so. That, not getting that extra support doesn't mean that the students don't get served. It means that. We have less funding in other areas because we're not getting reimbursed like we should be, like the, from the state and it's really. Puts us in a tough situation because students need additional support and that means staff increases. That we would like to have in programmatic increases. And I'm just taking a little bit of time because this is an area I think that is often overlooked. And it's really important for people to understand how these state, unfunded state um, pieces are affecting our local budget. And um, it's really frustrating um, to say it nicely.
I may add on to the same conversation. Uh, Lauren, could you explain, uh, some community members may have heard. A waiver for the cap and the impression is uh, there a waiver that we can submit and if we submit it. Wave that cap and we can receive the extra funds. Is that accurate?
I don't know anything about a waiver, that they just give you extra money because you filled out a form. Unfamiliar.
Thank you.
So, I've got a couple of questions. I am gonna take Mr. Arnold's advice and I'm gonna ask the question of how much would it take? To maintain services uh, at their current levels in this next uh, biennium? How much more would the Corbella School District need to receive?
That is in the budget message um, that Ryan presented and we would need um. About eight hundred million dollars more in the state school fund to ma- maintain current service levels.
I asked, how much do we?
Oh, do we?
Yeah, not, not how much does the state need to provide?
That's the two point nine eight.
Two point nine eight, okay. And then my next question is, I'm looking on page sixty-five in section three hundred, purchased services. In property services, there is a huge dip. Um, from twenty-three, twenty-four down to twenty-four, twenty-five and then back up to twenty-five, twenty-six, which comes out to on my back of the napkin math. Just under two point two million dollars. And then also travel, again, went from eight thirty-eight down to four hundred and thirty-seven. And back up to eight ninety-three, which is more than doubling. What's happening there?
Yeah, so um, on the property services, that's our utilities mainly for that number, uh, three twenty. Um, that was just, I made a mistake uh, in, in the um, last. Be budgeted for that. And so if you look at the actual data um, for spend on electricity, gas, water. Sewer, all of that this year, um, that number is really in alignment there. So I did, um, what I did was take the um, estimated spend. For all of those line items uh, this year. Looked at our average monthly expenditure there over the course of the year. Um, at that point, I think it was through March data, um, which is a pretty good chunk of the year. Um, and then I applied that to get a projection and then I applied a two point six percent increase on those. So. That was just an error on my end last year um, of that number. This is much more in, in alignment um, with what we're seeing.
So what, what have last numbers, what, what, what should have last, last year's number been?
I don't have that off the top of my head, it's in my spreadsheet. But yeah, where I can tell you what our projection will be for that, for property services. And then on the travel. Um, that was an interpretation. So we did reduce this year pretty much to eliminate all travel. Um, based on the, so we have what's called the PBAM, which is where all these codes come from, which is the. Program, budget, manual, something or another. It's our um, accounting manual that we are required to use from the state of Oregon. Um, we had a disagreement in the interpretation of the code. Um, internally of what, where we were billing things. And so we had um, like for example, anything that's related to a PD. So that's like the registration and things of that nature. All um, are supposed to go under. That function versus um, they were prior under zero six forty, sort of inconsistently. So some of the bigger changes in some of these um, objects is because I have an amazing accounting manager. Who's been with us for um, just over a year. And she like totally nerds out on this stuff, which is great. Um, because this is not my jam. I don't really love the whole um, account code piece of the job. Um, and so she's just worked to create some alignment so that our data moving forward is more consistent. Um, with how we're coding things. So she's been helping to communicate that. Um, with other people in our district that are doing that work, so that we do have a bit more consistent data. But it's really just about realigning of where we believe things fit within the short blurb that they give us. Um, within the, the manual.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Shana?
So I have two big sets or types of questions and I'd love to lean into one of those because they build on exactly where you were, Andrew, on page sixty-five. And then also page seventy-one that I know Lou had called up. Um, just in looking at. Really looking at wanting to understand myself and as well as for the community, some of these different changes we're seeing, both decreases and increases. Um, would love to just go through a couple to understand what we're seeing, how that plays out in the schools. Um, so on this, on sixty-five first, there are two areas where I noticed, noted a big decrease. One in additional salary. And then one also in contractual employee benefits. I assume that those may be linked. Um, could you tell us a little bit about what's going on in that additional salary decrease? What positions are in there since that's outside of licensed, classified, unrepresented? Are those temporary positions? What are the positions represented there that we're seeing?
For that category, it's really for um, additional salary on top of um, their regular duties. So for example, like we will have stipends for people who, I mentioned some of the different things, like safe advisors, equity coaches. Um, things like that. So these are supplemental positions on top of their regular position. Um. And so I looked at sort of the full picture of what that looked like. As well as we do have language in both of our contracts for um, some leave payouts. So personal leave, for example. Um, or vacation leave payout, depending on the contract, there's language that if it's unused at the end of the year, that would be um, a payout that they can, employees can take. And so again, I looked at that data from what was actually happening and just sort of realigned our projections. Um, by doing that. I would say, so just a little bit of context, we used a software last year. Uh, we have used for several years. It was my first time using it and so I was just kind of getting into that software. I really, really strongly disliked it um, and decided I didn't wanna pay for it and use it. Um, and so this year, um, the salaries and benefits, we can do that all within the software system we already have. And a lot of the other things, I did the old school way, um, by just exporting and doing a bunch of data analysis. Um, there. And so by doing that, it actually made me dig into our, um. You see a really rolled up version of the budget. We actually um, have, I think. I don't, I don't know. We have tens of thousands of account codes and budget lines. Um, and so these are rolled up by the fund. Function and object levels. Um, and within those, we actually have more detailed lines. So, but by doing that, I, I dug into. And I'm not gonna say every single line out of the tens of thousands, but I dug in a lot further than I would have if, if I was using the software. So some of this is just realignment. Um, our assumptions since the COVID period have been really tricky. Um, because things have been all over the place. And so, um, yeah, it's just, it's just a realignment. I'm not taking the budget from last year and just making all of my assumptions based on budgeted numbers last year. I'm making, applying my assumptions to the projections of what's actually happening in this current year. And I mean, as, as we stand now, um, this budget was printed, what, last Friday? Um, and we had to finalize it about a week before that. Many things have changed um, in planning since that point. And will continue to change all throughout the year. Um, and so same goes for last year. That was the plan at that point. Maybe things have changed. Um, so you will see decreases and increases in certain areas due to that. And that was a really long-winded answer, I'm sorry.
No, that's helpful. Thank you so much for explaining that. Um, I have a couple of lines on page seventy-one, if that's all right too?
Yep.
There are a couple of areas here. Um, Lou, I know you already called out the decrease in support for disability services. There are a couple of places where there are increases and I'm wondering if we could hear a little bit about what, either if that's. You know, realignment or readjustment, or if it's actually increased services on a couple of things um, that might. Be helpful for a community to know about or for us to know about. Um, one is in pre-kindergarten programs. It looks like there's a jump of about forty thousand dollars there. From twenty-four thousand to sixty-four thousand. And I saw you actually provided a very nice code on the next page for some of these that I had questions about. Um, but I was wondering if you could say a little bit about that.
So we have some specific funds that are um, specifically can only be used on those pre-K programs. Um, and so it is a little dollar amount, but it's part of the IDA six nineteen funds where we just have carryover. Um, on those federal funds that we are able to use um, in the next year. So. Generally for the pre-K, Melissa Harder would like to tell you what we might do with that dollar amount.
We like to use that pre-K for our Kinder Academy that happens in the summertime in combination with um, um, our summer programs for uh, elementary students.
And there also, I think, is like some pre-kinder home visits and different types of things that happen.
Yeah.
With kids too, so. Getting them ready.
All right, I have a couple more if that's okay while we're on this page. Is that all right? All right. Um, one is in alternative education. It looked like there was about almost an eight hundred thousand dollar increase.
Yep.
Would love to hear about what's happening there too, in terms of support.
Yeah, um. So again, this is um, in relation to Maria. Uh, she was assessing some of the um, account codes that we were using for alternative education. Some of those were just. Represented within the one-one-one-one elementary, um, middle school, high school account codes. And so it was just some realignment of how things were coded, not necessarily um, a true increase in programming. Just recognizing where those positions should be coded correctly.
Okay, so that was more of a, just an organizational shift of it. It used to appear somewhere else, now it appears here?
Correct.
Mostly, okay. And is that also true for psychological services? Or are we seeing something else there? It looks like there's an eight hu- from eight hundred thirty-five thousand to one point three million. Projected this year.
That was twenty-one forty.
Yep.
Um, no, that is generally related. Um, it's an increase of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, so related to the staffing costs. Um, and some of the um, contracted services that we have that fit within that category. So, and that's largely um, the contract that we, we have a contract for that and it doesn't um, cover that full amount.
So does that, does that translate into increased services? That we'd be seeing for students' mental health services, or is it maintaining?
Service level.
Okay. But it's not an increase in services at this time, okay?
No.
And then, I think I'm almost done with my questions, thank you. Um, improvement of instruction services, looks like there was a jump there. And then also assessment and testing. Those were a couple that I'd circled.
Um. You are looking at twenty-two ten, correct?
Correct.
See, I need my ruler.
And it actually looks like there was a pretty big decrease last year from prior year. So I was just wondering if that was a kind of a correction. I know last year there were choices made around curricula and choosing not to make.
Yeah, there is um, money in there for the curriculum adoptions that we have um, planned, which you heard about at the last board meeting, I think. Or two, I don't remember. Last one. Um, but no, those are just all general cost increases.
Okay, and then the assessment and testing, that was my last one on this page. It looks like the number doubled from last year to this year and I'm curious if that's.
Thirty. Maria tried to prep me on all the things she changed before tonight, but my brain doesn't work as well as hers. Um. So it is, and I'm reading just for the, just general knowledge, page seventy-three, we do call out all of the variances by function. So anything that's above a million or plus or minus a million or uh, plus or minus ten percent. So on the, on that one, it's related to recovering college board fees for students, so um, that's in that. Um, category there. And then we also um, corrected the coding for positions we had that are data supports. We do have assessment tech and then we do have um, two district level data specialists that help do all of that work. And that is largely um, related to, they support like our MTSS teams. Um, they provide, I mean, they compile a ton of data, do a ton of the state reporting that we're required to do, all of those things. It's just correction, they're not new positions.
Okay, so that's not an actual increase, we're just seeing a shift in where that was showing up in the budget?
Correct.
Okay, am I?
And then that college board is um, advanced placement tests.
Yes, we pay for the, the students to take the tests, to get those credits.
Thank you. And now really my last one and then I'll pass over to others to ask questions and I'll save my others for later. Um, on the back page, forty-one twenty. The site acquisition and development services, there's, looks like one point two million there and I'm curious what that is.
Yeah, so that's related to restricted revenue that we receive for construction excise tax. So construction excise tax um, is something that we are, there's a limit that we are allowed to assess for building permits. Um, within our jurisdiction. And so that number increases every year. Um, construction excise tax. Can only be used on those improvements. We don't um. I would be surprised if we spend it all, um, but we do have the appropriation there. So we're, as a reminder. The budget gives us the authority to spend up to that amount. That doesn't mean that we're actually going to spend that amount. Um, and so those are restricted revenues. Those cannot be used for anything else other than facility services. So um. It's there, I, TBD if we spend it. Um, generally, we like to keep that there. For unexpected things that come up, um, or big projects that we have um, down the road.
One of the most recent was a restroom redesign at um, at Crescent Valley.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yep.
Bernie?
Yeah, uh, just a quick question on object five thirty, uh, improvements other than buildings is. It, it's a significant increase from previous years. Can you tell me why?
Could you tell me what page you're on?
I'm sorry, it's uh, page sixty-six.
I had that same question, just to tag on, and I was like, is that for Osborne?
The, no, that is also related to the construction excise tax as well. The improvements is in that capital outlay section. So it's just the funds that we have available, doesn't mean we're going to spend them, but they are restricted revenues that we cannot direct towards something like instruction or support services or something like that.
But that's not Osborne, right?
No, we still, the only thing related to Osborne in this budget is the a hundred thousand dollars that we have committed to give to them to supplement the operations, that's built into the budget. And, you know, all of that process is still ongoing.
Since we're talking about that, these, the line items that we may not end up having expenditures for could not go towards that though, since it's a facility, I'm just curious. But I know we're trying to figure that, because we don't even know how much it's going to cost, but.
We don't. It's not really, I don't know why that's not something I haven't considered. I, I think we probably could use those dollars for Osborne because we own the facility, but I would have to check into the specific language written in statute around construction excise tax.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, before we continue, I heard a couple people ask if we could take maybe a short recess. So let's take about ten minutes. I've got eight-twenty-five right now, so come back at eight-thirty-five. Alright, thank you everybody. We are back, but before we continue, Lauren said she wanted to add to a couple of her previous comments.
So not only is Maria a master at account codes, she's also at home watching this. And she reminded me that we, so the difference between in the special education coding, some of those are behavior support specialists, which actually have moved to that new function that Shawna, you had mentioned, a decrease in one function and then an increase in the other. And that is related to the change of coding there. She also reminded me of the number, that capital improvement other than buildings, the five-thirty, I'm looking at page sixty-six. We have a anticipated grant coming through the foundation for Corvallis Fields for the Future. Is that the correct language around that? So we have some donors that are fundraising for that project. So that revenue would be restricted specifically to that project and then pass through to us from the foundation. So it's, it's very earmarked for that. Yeah.
Lauren, which one was that one?
The five-thirty on page sixty-six, the improvements other than buildings.
Okay, so we could not use that for.
No, it's, we actually don't have the funds, we're just anticipating the funds, so we have to build in the capacity to use said funds. And then I also want to say that when we're looking at objects, objects go underneath functions. So looking at, you may see it presented one way here on the objects. And then, so typically, objects with the four thousand starting function also have a five hundred level object. So those are not duplicate expenditures, it's the same thing for the most part. So that's there. And then you also see that the rest of it would be that construction excise tax, which is also restricted for facilities improvements.
Okay. Can, and what you just shared about the special education funding, is that in a general area though now? And it's, or is it specifically for special education?
It's still specifically for special education, and it's included in our maintenance of effort, MOE calculation. So we designate everything for special education with three-twenty area. Areas are not represented in the budget document, we don't show down to that level.
Yeah, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that they didn't get moved somewhere where they could get used some for something else.
No, it's just correction of the coding.
Thank you.
And the term maintenance of effort is a requirement that we spend the same or more in general fund dollars year over year, supporting students with disabilities.
Okay, Sammy?
I'd like to go for a second round, unless there's another committee member who would like to go first.
Anybody who has not yet asked a question who wants to?
So, thank you Chair. So with that, I would like to bring our attention to pages one-seventy and one-seventy-five. And as we go there, one-seventy and one-seventy-five, Lauren, could you correct me? If I, I heard that the decline in enrollment of students was about ten percent, so that's the comment we heard. And what I'm seeing here, at least from the ADM, extended ADM WR, the decline is much less than that. So could you highlight, what's the percentage of the decline either by student population or ADMW?
So we're expecting a decline of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven students next year. And just to make sure that we understand that ADMW is the higher of your current year or the last year. So we are always, at this point, in a declining enrollment situation, being paid off of the last year. And the reason that the state does that is to try to smooth out any trends, plus or minus. What happens, generally the biggest impact to that across the state is when a school district adopts, I don't know what the right word is, but a charter school. And sometimes charter schools go back and forth between districts. So maybe in one year, this happened between Saniam Canyon and Syo, I don't know, a handful of years ago, where one year, and those are both small districts, right? And so one year they gained like two thousand students, and then three years later they lose two thousand students. And so that methodology is just used to smooth trends.
Okay.
Two-hundred-and-thirty-seven students next year, we are expecting that as a decrease.
Which is the worst-case scenario in terms of appropriation. The appropriation will be less of impact than that.
It will not change the appropriation because we're going to get paid on this current year. The only way it would change the appropriation through the state school fund is if we receive more kids next year than we currently have in this year.
Okay, thank you. So now with page one-seventy, I'm just going to share rough calculations on object one-eleven, which is FTEs for, or after accounts for licensed staff. And it looks like the decline from this year to next year is about six-point-one-nine per. And it looks like the decline from this year to next year is about six point one nine percent. Classified staff, one one two, decline is about four point three or four point four percent. And administrators, they make about four percent of the FTE. And the decline is about three point seven, three percent. And also we have other non-represented staff. So I just want to put that decline in perspective as I go to page one seventy. And I believe we did discuss in page one, oh, sorry, one seventy-five. In page one seventy-five, we did discuss earlier in another question from a colleague, that the salary costs by objects are increasing because of the contractual obligations that we have.
Yeah.
So I'm going just to comment here on my notes. For licensed staff is about, an increase of about two point six percent. For classified staff, the appropriation in million dollar, in millions of dollars is slightly increasing from sixteen million to sixteen point five million, which is three point four percent. And for administrators, it's declining, the appropriation is declining slightly, about zero point zero one percent. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So the question is, do, does any, well, as a budget committee, we don't make staffing levels decisions.
Yeah.
But also, I'm hearing from the community linking to decisions of a board or administration to the budget appropriation. And I want to make sure it's clear. In this year, did we enter any collective bargaining or any renewal of contracts? Because my understanding, collective bargaining and renewal of contracts were already settled for next year, even before the beginning of this year, correct?
For certified and classified, but the, the non-rep agreement, it's not under a union bargaining unit. And so that one generally gets renewed every year. But it follows what we do with the other contracts.
And we do it every year in June, in coming June, correct? Or before the end of the fiscal year in our last meeting?
Yeah, it has to be approved by the end of the fiscal year because a lot of the people actually on that contract work in July. So we, in order to be able to pay them. I don't know of a scenario where we haven't had a non-rep contract in place because in lieu of bargaining, it, I guess, easy, like, the process is a little bit quicker. But if we didn't have one in place, then we would continue pay status quo.
Thank you. So to highlight, and again, I really want to uplift community conversations I'm hearing from the community. To uplift those questions or wonderings, we're discussing potential cuts overall in the budget. However, our contractual obligations with our representative groups have been settled before even the beginning of this year. We will in June consider renewal of non-rep staff and administration. And to my understanding, most if not all of our administration, our contract duration is consistent with our representative group, their multi-year contracts. So whatever we will do in June is not going to impact next year's because we're extending the last year of the contract with a different appropriation. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would say just a couple of things. We, so I want to be clear that while we are, this budget represents a decline in FTE, it actually represents an increase in dollar. So in order to have left, less FTE actually costs more dollars. So I just want to be clear about that. And as far, you said a few things, I just want to, I'm not sure if I understood correctly, but so our staff, several of our non-represented staff, if not all, Jennifer Duval, that rhymed, have already been, they, their, their contracts have been renewed for next year. I think that's already come to the board. But it's like the staffing position contracts, employment contracts between the school and the individual. The actual agreement that governs how those employees are paid is what will come to the board for approval.
Thank you. So when we consider those discussions, just for educational purposes for the community, since we don't know how much we're appropriated from the state until, like, even yesterday's revenue forecast is the most certain we ever gotten, and we still have uncertainty we're dealing with. What does inform the administration, school board, in terms of having a contract that's a certain amount of dollar for a certain employee? Is the market rate for comparative districts? How do we look forward for a year or two from here? If we don't know how much money we're getting from the state when we pass the budget months or even a year after settling a contract?
It's a good question, Sammy. I mean, that's, that is sort of the predicament that every, I think, every entity that agrees to multi-year contracts is in. At the end of the day, I think that we are prioritizing paying our staff fair wages and we are going to continue with that. I don't anticipate that we would come back to our bargaining groups and ask them for a freeze or anything of that nature. That's not in, I don't think that's the situation that we are in. But when I start budgeting, because we have those multi-year contracts, that's the very first thing I have to do, right? Like, I have to apply whatever that looks like against our revenue projections. And, and because, as you saw, our staffing and associated payroll costs make up more than half of our overall expenditures. We, that is the biggest sort of leverage that we have as far as making budget reductions when they're quite large. And so it's just, it's just how the puzzle pieces fit back together. And it's something that we deal with on a regular basis. So I, I don't know that really answers your question, but it's not something that's super black and white. It's just a part of how school district budgets work. And we work through that on an annual basis.
Yeah, thank you, Lauren. And I'm going to editorialize. I really appreciate you answering this in this way because it's really highlights and uplifts the conversations we're having with community members. When we see some really serious cuts and they're, they're really touching important programs. The elements that we're not compromising on is as a district, as a whole, we're honoring a multi-year commitment with our staff from classified, certified, admin, and everybody in between. And making sure that long-term commitments provide stability for the organization. And frankly competitiveness with other districts because almost every district I know of have multi-year contract obligation. However, maybe in the general perception of the public, how do you have a commitment like that's multi-year? And, and you don't know how much money you're going to get. So there's a difference between a school district and a small business, for example, and how we need to plan for it. So really appreciate you highlighting that.
I would say that it's not always a negative. I mean, sometimes our inflation rate, like, the, the general cost of living for the public is a lot higher than what are, what we've agreed to with in contract. So there are times where it goes both ways. And so it also creates stability for employees, so they know what to expect. And I, I think, I don't, I don't know how we would operate any differently because that, that is what, you know, OEA and OSEA come to expect through these negotiations.
Agreed. Thank you so much.
I wanted to just point out on page fifty-nine, I am concerned with the negative thirty-seven percent decline in the federal funds. So it may not be a large amount of money, but I think like, this has been something I've commented on, like, the disinvestment in public education. And I think that that graph really shows that, as well as a very tiny five percent increase from state. And with the biggest one coming at nine percent increase from local service sources. So I just wanted to just really point that out to anybody watching, that, that's an important data set I feel like to look at. Because it's a trend that has been happening over the years that I've been watching about the investment in public education going down by public funds. And I find that disturbing. So my question is a clarification. One more question about special education, then I swear I have other questions too. But that is not just for students with IEPs, correct? The special education funding? It's like for special education in general, right? So there's students that don't have IEPs that fall under special education funding? No? It's all, it's all for students with IEPs? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's for students with IEPs.
Okay.
There are students who have qualified under section five oh four of the ADA. And for those students, those accommodations are provided by the general ed teacher in a plan that's developed with the family. So that is a diff, that would be out of general funds rather than out of special ed funds.
Okay, that was just a question, just to clarify for folks. And then the one that I had a question on was on page sixty-five, the food lines. It's on, I think, sixty-five and sixty-six. The food budgeted funding went down on the four hundred dash four fifty and the three thousand dash three, thirty-one hundred. And I was curious why the budgeted funds went down for those services.
Can you say the second number that you were looking at?
Three thousand dash thirty-one hundred.
Oh, on the, the revenues?
They both went down, right?
Yeah, so part of our food service program is funded by federal funds. So there's that impact there. And then the food cost, we are just currently working on better efficiencies within our kitchens and looking at our program as a whole to figure out how we can improve it and also make it more efficient. So the budget is representative of that.
Okay. I was just curious because I know that's a big part of the district commitments is to make sure that students have food.
It's not changing that we are,
Not feeding them health.
Not feeding kids. It's just, and we're also looking at some things from the sustainability standpoint of food waste and things like that, so.
And it doesn't mean we're feeding lower quality food, right?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's super clear because with our commitments and everything.
And again, the, the budget numbers are different than what's actually currently happening in the year. We assumed a, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but at the time we did the budget, the CPI specifically related to food was super high. If you remember, you know, the whole egg debacle was not that long ago and before that produce and, and all the things. And so there was a pretty high CPI applied to food at that time. I don't remember the number off the top of my head. And we have been able to come in lower than that.
Okay. And eggs are super still expensive, but the.
I have a friend with chicken, so I'm unsure.
On page forty-eight, too, sorry to go back and forth on these. And that was in your presentation to the budget at a glance.
Yeah.
The, the amended twenty twenty-four and twenty-five and twenty-five, twenty-six, like those, there's, I know the number went down a little bit. It's not huge, but I'm just curious about how this is keeping up with, it's not keeping up with inflation basically, right?
No, and the reason why the, the, if you're, are you talking about specifically the general fund?
I'm just talking, oh, no, the whole graph went up. Sorry, the general fund did go down, but the whole graph piece barely went up.
Correct. That's the problem.
That's like, that's not helpful.
No.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I had a clarifying question around the food service. Does this include, are we expecting to continue to qualify for the community eligibility? Which allows for the free and universal free lunch and meals for students? And so is that accounted for here? Are we concerned about losing that with the changes at the federal level?
Yes, we're concerned about losing that with changes at the federal level. And no, it's not represented in this budget. Because that, the president's budget was released after the assumptions were set for this. Regardless of that, it won't change that we feed kids. We'll figure it out.
Do we have any idea on where trade-offs might come from to make sure that that happens?
It depends on the impacts of the changes. We always, our general assumption when we put together a budget is a two percent savings on a budget. And largely that comes from the fact that we don't have a hundred percent of the allocated FTE filled for a hundred percent of the contract days. And so there's always some savings represented there. Some things that I didn't point out, and I'm sort of surprised that people have not asked yet, is that we did assume, for one thing, is we assumed federal funding a decrease of twenty-five percent. We're hearing that we may get flat funding, so that's kind of TBD, but that should represent some additional funds freed up there because we put those positions in the general fund. And the general fund is generally unrestricted. And so we could use that money to support the food service. In addition, there was Senate Bill eight forty-nine, I think it was, related to PERS. And that change, I, it was, I don't know exactly where the bill is. I know that it was signed, so it's happening. What I know is that there was some additional, like this site account related to PERS that had earned better than what they had calculated into their assumptions. And so there's sort of this one-time pot of money sitting on the side. And then a lot of people came to legislature with different ideas of what should we do with that pot of money? The idea that one was to apply it to the extreme rate hikes that we were seeing in this next biennium. And so that should, they're saying, buy down our PERS rates by one point six eight percent. We do not have recalculated PERS rates yet, and it has not been, I believe it'll be passed through the PERS board at some point in the next two weeks. They have a meeting, which then they will publish new rates. The budget assumes the rates that were released to us prior because I, in my career, have not received corrected PERS rates. That's not a thing that we're used to seeing. And so there, there should be a slight savings there as well. And so that money can be shifted to some of those federal priorities that we may lose funding on.
On the subject of PERS, I was looking at, I think it's on page sixty-two here, looking at the PERS. We've got tier one and tier two members and then the OPSERP members. And so I, I know that the, some time ago, we were fortunate to kind of really buy down some of our PERS expenses. And I was wondering, one, if you could talk about when that benefit of that is going to
Yeah.
leave us. And then what is the, what, what is, will be the impact as we see tier one and tier two employees moving out of the system and OPSERP members becoming a larger percentage of the system? Do we expect that that will impact us favorably or flatly or who knows? I'm just curious your thoughts.
Yeah. That's a complicated question. But if you turn to page one sixty-six, you will see this number. I found another typo. I need my sticky note. This number, on October second of not twenty twenty-two, it was two thousand and two, we issued bonds in order to buy down the rates. And we will be done paying those off in twenty twenty-eight. So we have three fiscal years to pay those off. We pay those by taking a portion of the payroll and redirecting it to a reserve fund that then pays that debt service. For this year, it'll be about five point four five percent. And I anticipate that we may, that, that should be the, the, the rate that I am redirecting will decrease over the next, until twenty, or twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Because you can see that the debt service payment is about half in that final year. So there's a few things. We have a potential recognized savings of five point four five percent of payroll into all the other funds that we pay employees from, which is all from one hundred and two hundred funds. So there is anticipated savings there by not having to make a debt service payment. But if you track the PERS rates biennium over biennium, what you see is that the cost of OPSERP employees is now starting to become higher because those employees are now get either at or being close to eligible to retire. And so we have more OPSERP employees that are now going to be able to retire as well. And so as that number goes up and the more employees that come into the system goes up, that are all, anybody entering PERS now enters as an OPSERP. So the number of employees there then impacts that program. And so what you'll see is we, we see the retirees coming from tier one and tier two. So that percentage will probably stay stable-ish. And the number on. And the number on the OPSERP is going to go up. And I can't project what that will look like. We rely heavily on Piper Sandler, we have a connection through them, and they do a lot of estimations for all of the school districts on what that looks like, as well as some actuarial services, like Milliman, who, this is their jam, and they're really good at it. And most of the time, we receive all of those services for free from, through either COSA or OASBA, which are our organizations. So it's hard to say what's gonna happen with PERS. They put more restrictions in place, obviously, between tier one and tier two and OPSERP, that's the whole reason for the different categories. There's salary caps and there's some different things. But as we have more employees retiring within that category, and there is a large amount of debt on the PERS side, they currently don't have enough money to pay the employees that are on the pension, receiving a pension. We could see something come out again and need to reissue new bonds to buy down some of that debt. It's really unknown. Right now is not an advantageous time to procure bonds. So I'm not, at this point, we wouldn't probably look to do a study until the market stabilizes a bit.
We don't expect that the rate's gonna go down in this biennium or the next biennium.
No, yeah.
So, so question, I'm on old people's social media, and so that's where I'm getting, I think the community is hoping music wouldn't be cut. So question, as we're talking about, yeah, state funding, the projection, maybe it's not as bleak, we're not gonna hold our breath. But, but if over the summer, the federal cuts aren't as steep as we, as projected, or there's some other adjustment, is there a possibility that they'd be restored, the music would be restored over the summer?
So I can't speak to if that would be the number one priority. Just, that's not a, that's not a me decision, that's like a group conversation. What I can say is, at the high school and middle school level, the allocation of FTE towards music is based on student forecasting data. So we, when there's less students, there probably would need to be less teachers to teach the same amount of courses. And then that's sort of the general idea when you look at allocating FTE per, on a student basis. At the elementary level, there were some other things that were taken into consideration with the music decision. And so in the prior year, or the current year that we're in, prior budget cycle, we ended up, if you remember, we had the same number of minutes allocated for PE, music, and art. This year, those became misaligned. We had different minutes for PE, which is largely related to the division to twenty-two minutes requirements. But in addition, we had less art time than we did for music. And from a technical standpoint, that creates some issues in scheduling because every single day looks different. And so for, for principals to be able to put together a schedule where all students are able to receive all of the different specials and their lit time and math time and intervention and lunch and recess and all the different things, that became pretty complicated, and that was something that, feedback that we got from teachers as well. And then the second part of that is, when we, what we're seeing is while we really value all of those music, art, PE, library, all of those additional things, the more time we carve out specific time for that, the less, the less lit instruction our kids are receiving, and the less instruction in math our kids are receiving. And ultimately, our, our goal is that every one of our kids can read, and every one of our, our kids is on track to graduate. And so in order to do that, they need to receive instruction in those areas. That's not to say that those other specials aren't important, because they are, and we know that they can supplement the learning in math and in lit, but there are no requirements for minutes on either one of those things. And that was sort of a tough thing to have to prioritize. But the, the idea behind that was all kids reading and all kids on track to graduate, which means meeting that math requirement.
Yeah, I have some questions for accounts in page seventy-one.
Okay.
The first question is about twenty-five twenty, the fiscal services.
Yeah.
So from this year to next year, we can see there is a three million increase.
Yeah.
And so are you, can you explain a little bit about this one?
Yeah, so in fiscal services, there's a lot of things, and this is something that, again, Maria and I were talking about, and we have tagged as a change for next year. But within that is all of our insurance premiums. And so those numbers have increased quite a bit. And so it's not really reflective of the actual fiscal services staff, which is my team. It's eight people, it does not cost that much money. But it's all of the things that we're paying for, like all of the property and liability insurance, as well as the insurance premiums for employees. So that's why it looks that way, and we, we have a new function that she has wanting to, to direct those things to next year. So what you can see next year is a new function that went from zero to a large amount, and then this number will go down. So if you look at page, let me find it. If you look at page twenty-five twenty, sorry, no, that's the function, page one hundred, sorry. You look at twenty-five twenty function in the general fund, that's more representative of what's actually happening there. So you do see the one point nine related to insurance, but, so if you take that off of the top, the other numbers you can see there.
Okay, another question is about the second, and the next one, at twenty-five forty. So what are the planned services provided by the school district here?
Yeah, so that's all of our custodial maintenance, any building repairs that are not of a capital nature. Any, I mean, we have a ton within that department. All of, all of the supplies for custodial, supplies for maintenance, all of the utilities are represented under there, so it's a lot of things.
Oh, thank you. But, yeah, compared to number of this year, the next year's number is not that, not that bad. But if we compare the number of, you know, like, of five years ago, and the number of next year, we will see the number has, you know, increased for like, three, about three million dollars.
Yeah.
So-
So, as the bond fund went away, so the bond fund took care of most of all of the things that were happening, other than staffing, obviously, in that fund. So all of, any repairs to buildings, any improvements to buildings, anything like that, were all covered by the bond funds for several years. So as the bond funds went away, that function, the general fund, truly is now having to carry that weight again to do those things.
Okay, good. So thank you. And the last question is about the, another, the twenty-five fifty, and next to the planned services. So now it's, we can see, actually, yeah, in the past of five years, the transportation services also have increased, right? But from the students enroll numbers, actually, the district had less students. Why does we, you know, see the increase in the transportation services here?
It's not really related to the number of students, it's related to the miles driven, and our boundaries haven't changed. So that's the major driver of that. Also, the increase in contract costs, we had inflation costs, we've had a hard time. We contract out with STA for our transportation services, but we've had a hard time by proxy of STA retaining, recruiting and retaining drivers. So we've had to, they've had to increase salary, which means our contract price increases. So there's a lot of things at play there. We have one staff member that we fund internally in relating, relation to student transportation services. What's important to note about student transportation services is seventy percent of that is returned back to us via the state school fund. So we, we, while we budget for the full a hundred percent of the expense, the true net cost is only thirty percent of that.
Okay, good to know that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So as we're drawing toward a conclusion, as I'm expecting, I want to ask a question that I hope it would be a good, a good note or a positive note in a very tough situation. So appreciate the budget, appreciate the work, and I appreciate prioritizing the kids first and foremost. And I want to highlight, if I would refer to a certain point in the video, or a list I can compile, I want non-comprehensive lists, no matter the amount, how big or small. Can we list things that went well or is going to go well in terms of, here's how we're generating revenue, or here's how we're saving costs, no matter who's doing this effort? It could be classified, certified, non-rep administration, or the school board made a decision. And I have a preliminary list to start with, if you may expand on it, and if you can add to it. So I'm remembering in terms of revenue, the outreach to dropout students, a chronically absentee, absent student that we just heard about, an update about for fourteen students, that's increasing the revenue for the school district. And that also is bringing students back to the school. The Medicaid reimbursements that we have invested in over the last five years will continue, hopefully will continue to provide revenue for the district that's helped us get kids to help. The solar panels next door and over several schools are providing cost reduction in terms of power consumption, building energy efficiencies. Those are lists I started compiling, and I would like to hear from you whether you can expand on any of those or any other bright spots that will make the budget next year a little bit better than it would have been because of these things.
Yeah, it's an interesting question because we're not in the business of making money.
Yes.
So I don't really think about it from that perspective. I think about it more from like savings, which you, some of the things you noted were related to that. But from that perspective, things I'm thinking about is the conversations and work that we've done, we've done at the district office this year to talk, I think I mentioned, like consolidating some departments and support for those departments and some positions around that. I think that we have, by the, the state grants that we, well, one is federal, one is state, grants that we have, and being able to have our literacy TOSA and our math TOSA, we're saving money on sending our staff to outside professional learning opportunities because we send one person who then is able to become the expert in that arena, and then able to help provide those opportunities. That doesn't mean that we're not spending money on outside professional learning, but that's a part of it. Those are some things I think about. We are constantly looking at things from the sustainability perspective that you mentioned. And so even just looking at our consumption of all of those different utilities, I don't know, you know, and Kim is not here for the expert in this arena, how many square footage of buildings that we're operating on a daily basis, but it's a lot. I understand that number is huge, but, I mean, I know how much we spend just at my house on utilities, and it's significant. So that number there, any savings there is, is good. We're constantly evaluating our contracts, so that's another thing that I rely heavily on Maria for as well, is to look at our contracts and help me evaluate, like, is this right? We provide services to a few other school districts, we provide their food service, their meals. And so are those programs at least breaking even? Those sort of things that we're constantly looking at. And I think we're trying to just, we're constantly evaluating, not just doing things the same as we've always done them, because there may be a better way, better way for student outcomes, and maybe a more efficient way financially. There's not a, I don't feel like there's a ton that we have control over ultimately. And so we do what we can.
Thank you.
Thanks, I wanted to bounce back to kind of the response to Tony's question about the music. And you mentioned something that stood out to me that I have not thought about, and I was wondering if you could explain a little more. You talked about the alignment of the specials, and that we'd gotten a little bit out of balance. So first question, what are we doing, what is the standard right now for art in the elementary schools? What has it been for this year?
We're doing one sixteen minute, no. One forty-five minute period of art, and so that's staying the same next year, so all of the specials will be forty-five minutes, so.
And they'll all be once a week, or they'll be-
PE will be twice a week, library will be once a week, music will be once a week, and art will be once a week, and those forty-five minute chunks.
And they'll all be forty-five minutes?
Not library, but I believe that's how it fits into the schedule.
Okay, and so prior to the, the round of budget cuts that adjusted art and library, I can't remember because that was many, many months ago now. What had been the art and library access prior to those cuts?
My assumption is the library was probably not quite aligned across elementary schools, just how it fit into their schedules. But for art and PE and music, it was forty minutes twice a week, so eighty minutes total.
Okay, so I guess a question slash concern I have around talking about bringing these into alignment is that when we talk about adjusting music because it's out of alignment with the others, I guess I struggle some because I feel like those cuts were, I thought, maybe, I thought they were a little problematic. Like, I understand that we needed to do it, and I supported the budget, I know we didn't have another choice. But it concerns me a little bit to think about that the way to rectify the misalignment is to cut music more as opposed to talking about what are we gonna do to bring the others back so that we've got forty minutes twice a week for all the things? I realize that this budget does not allow us to do that. I'm not suggesting that you should come back with a budget that does that, right? I'm saying, I, I don't think I'm comfortable leaning into the idea of saying it's a good idea to cut music because it will address the alignment of these specials when the community was, I think, very clear the last time around, that they didn't want that to be where we took from. And then they've been extremely clear this time that that's not where they want us to take from. And we are now talking about, well, what feels a little bit like a spin to say we're gonna get them to line up with each other. So it's a bad cut, but we're gonna make it to all of them, so it's equally bad for everything. That makes me a little bit uncomfortable. But I also understand that the budget has a balance, so I'm not, I wouldn't embrace that rationale. I would lean more on the, we don't have enough money to pay for more. That said, the, we did not see, at least I don't remember, any data prior to the cuts to art and library that art and library or specials were potentially disrupting math and reading. So this feels like new information to me, and I'm hoping you can comment on how we came to the conclusion that art, that math and reading were potentially in trouble in such a way that pulling from specials we thought would help.
So when, when we were working back in December, as we were starting to develop our budget, we met with our administrative groups by level, and one of the areas that came up from our elementary principals was the concern about making sure that everything fit within this, the six and a half hour day, basically. And they have seen that as a challenge for a number of years, and they felt like it was important to make sure that kids continue to have specials every day because we want kids to have access to art, we want kids to have access to music, PE twice a week because that's still state law, as well as library, and at the same time balancing that within the school day that our kids have. So as we talked with our elementary principals around that, that was one of the areas that they said we need, we should make an adjustment around.
Okay, thank you, that, that context does help. So I am curious what to do with the, what feels like the tension between many staff, teachers, who have come and expressed concerns about these changes. It seems like we don't have agreement between some of our teaching staff and our leadership in our buildings. And I'm curious about what, well, what are we going to do about that? What can be done about that? It seems like they, they don't share the same vision then about what is the best thing to do around the scheduling challenges.
I think that means that our principals, our principals have additional responsibility for having those conversations with- I think that means that our principles, our principals have additional responsibility for having those conversations with their staff as they're building their master schedule for the upcoming year. And as they think about that, the, the day in classrooms, to be thinking about if we have this, um, additional time, how are we making sure that we're utilizing it, um, well? Because as you think about an elementary classroom, they're teaching, um, language arts, they're teaching math, they're teaching science, they're teaching social studies, they're teaching health. Um, they're teaching all, all those components of a day, and, and again, it is hard to fit everything in. We've heard this, kind of my whole career, we've heard that we can't get through all the content in the school year. Um, and so we're trying to find the, the best way to balance those things and make sure kids still have a well-rounded education. Um, and so the, the commitment to make sure kids have those access to those programs, and we also continue to address, um, I've, we've had a lot of critique around our reading scores. Um, and while we had a significant improvement from last year to this year, that, um, that critique exists, and we need to continue to work to address it.
I really appreciate your answer, and I think it highlights a couple of key things to keep in mind, um, that all of these things are important, and they're six and a half hours. And in every classroom, teachers are having to make choices about what they have the capacity and the resources to really promote. And I think it is, um, that's just an important perspective for us to hold on to as a community. Because of course, I want our kids to get art and music and all of those things. I don't want them to lose anything. And also, we can't manufacture time. We do have six and a half hours, and I, I think that synopsis that you provided is the best rationale I've heard for why we might have some challenges around how to support all the different components of learning that are important, and we're only keeping our kids there for six and a half hours, and at the elementary level, we're asking one teacher to span all of that bandwidth to do that. And if any, if COVID showed, well, me, anything at all, it's that I am not an elementary school teacher. And so, and I would be a terrible elementary school teacher. And so I do want to just recognize, I, I know that that's a lot of lift for them to carry. And I don't, I'm going to support this because I think that it is in our best interest for us to go forward with a budget that we know, we know we can make work, and we continue to put the pressure on other entities to do better with funding. But I think the piece that you're hitting on here with time is something that no budget's going to fix for us. And it is important for us to really have a, a, a deep community conversation about what do we want our kids to be able to do when they leave every day? And we may not have necessarily the same priorities out of that, but we do have the same six and a half hour day. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I, you know, the last thing I want to say about that is that that's, like, this is a diff- difficult conversation to have because it, it, it's, can sound like, um, either we are placing a higher priority on one aspect of what happens in school over another, and there's folks that are doing both of the, responsible for both of those areas. And so I don't want it to, I, I know that that's how it sounds, and that's a hard thing to, to say. And we still want to make sure kids have access to those programs and are ready academically, and that's, that is the, the challenge we face in K twelve.
It does shift the focus of our conversation away from just budgeting and also to thinking about time constraints though. And I have not heard that part of the conversation as vocally, and I think, well, why aren't we talking about that part? We need to talk about that piece too. So thank you for bringing that up. It, it does answer the question of, um, how the district is thinking about it in ways that, as a parent, I'm not probably going to think of it that way. So, thank you.
I just wanted to, um, add on, uh, to the conversation and how I had mentioned earlier that there's been a disinvestment in funding for public education. There's also been a devaluing of creative arts and expression by society in general in public education. Um, and I really don't think that we're doing that necessarily in the district on purpose. And it feels more like we should be advocating for that to be included as a necessary part of education because I think it is, um, and I don't think that's something our budget can fix at all. I think it's something that we need to fix in a larger scale somehow. And I know in some conversations I have suggested like, what does it look like to request that that becomes a part of the core curriculum in K twelve because then we can advocate in other ways or that the staff can. We can't advocate for positions in general. But those, we don't even measure the impact of those in state assessments at all, even though we know that they're impactful. And so those are just things I think as we continue conversations around this, I think it's important to acknowledge that too, that, that's not something that has been determined that we can measure, even though we know it's really good, like, because we have experienced it in our community. And I don't know how we could address that in a budget committee at all, and, um, that's been the ask of us, and I think that's a tough situation to be in. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to add that on to what you're saying and for us to think about.
So can I add one thing to that, what Lou shared? Um, the reason why, uh, we have a mandate or a requirement around the, the number of minutes that we teach PE is because Peter Courtney, who was a longtime legislator who has since passed, found, um, that heart health was an important thing to him, and that is why that, um, is in, in, is in the law and that the requirement of school districts at this point in time.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I have one question regarding, uh, the account, uh, nineteen twenty and page, uh, fifty-seven. So that account, uh, says, um, a school district can get the contributions, donations, and the general fundraising from private sources, and, uh, from the number of, uh, for next year, actually the increase is quite impressive. It's about, uh, one million dollars. Uh, it's, and so I'm curious, um, about this account. So would you like to explain a little bit more about that?
It directly impacts to that, um, Corvallis Fields for the Future, so that, that we have to have the revenue for the expenditure. And prior, we talked about the expenditure related to, um, that project, and so this is the corresponding revenue. It comes in under, um, that account code nineteen twenty because it's coming from the foundation.
Oh, which foundation?
Corvallis Public Schools Foundation.
Ah, okay. So this account is related to, uh, foundation, right? It's like.
It's not restricted to the foundation, but that's where most of that revenue comes from is from the foundation.
Okay. So, uh, from my understanding is like if the community members, you know, or parents like to donate, their money would be, um, um, going to this account directly to help, um, school district, right?
That's the revenue. That's where the revenue would be recognized, and, um, we, our preferences for the donations to go through the Corvallis Public Schools Foundation, um, as they're a large supporter of the district.
Okay. So I'll, I, I'm, um, more question about this one is like if, uh, community members or parents like to, um, have specific program to set up so they can donate their money to this account, then to have the negotiation with school district? So is that correct or not?
No. Um, the, the district has ultimate authority if they're going to run a, a program, um, under the district umbrella. So when you donate to the foundation, you can put, uh, they have like a, a place to notate what you would like the funds to go to. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean, like, we're not, we don't fund any staffing with money from the foundation. Um, and we wouldn't necessarily start a new program, um, especially not if it was fully, uh, if it wasn't fully funded. But if you have, um, questions about like a campaign or anything like that, I would encourage you to reach out to the foundation because, um, they would be the ones to accept the donations.
Okay. Thank you.
At, at the risk of losing my, my position as vice chair, I'm going to ask a, a question that might, might, is for, for Ryan. In, in, and before I ask the question, I, I valued the, the public commentary. I'm going to reference that a little bit. Uh, so last year I asked the question about can we get good numbers about declining enrollment based on kids that are living in our district and aren't there? And, and I appreciate, and this is for Mr. Arnold's, uh, I'm a budget committee member that asked that question, but I also valued, I got to continue to ask it over the year and, and, and dialogue with, with you, uh, on that. Uh, however, uh, Mr. Blacker seemed like the, the intensity or, or maybe the depth of the students we're losing doesn't score up with what's on the FAQ on, on the, on the pay district website. So I'm hoping, and, and maybe this goes to next meeting, a, a conversation about what, what do we know about the truth of, of students that we, we could have coming back to our schools? But probably my question is, i- is, and, and maybe this is outside of the budget committee, uh, authority, but, but can we have discussions of ways that we do start engaging and, and get people to return to, to our schools?
So initially I'd like to talk about that data set, um, that was shared today. Um, Lauren, I'm going to have her talk to, about it because she, um, reached out to the Department of Ed today to better understand that data set and where it comes from, um, in comparison to, um, our local birth rate data. So do you want to talk a little bit about what you learned?
Sure. Um, so the report that that data was retrieved from is a report that the Oregon Department of Education publishes on an annual basis, um, in relation to their poverty count. So the data set is relation to poverty count, not in relation to enrollment in schools. So I'm a little unclear on why those two things are being correlated, um, but that's fine. Um, there, that data set is also, um, the SAIP, S A I P E, and it's called, uh, I don't know that acronym off the top of my head. Anybody? Small something. Um, and so that information comes from, um, the federal government. Um, it comes from the Census Bureau, and it's the, um, accumulation of, um, multiple data sets. And if you actually go onto the SAIP data, um, and look at that, first of all, the data, the last data set they have is from twenty twenty-three, and I think in that, um, graphic that was presented, the data's been, uh, correlated to the wrong year, so those aren't even tied together. Um, but what we know is if you go back and look at that SAIP data, it's actually uh, quite overstated if you just look at the general population. So if you go back to the original data set on the, uh, census.gov website, um, they're overstating the, the Corvallis population within our zip code, um, by about ten thousand residents. So my assumption would be that if we are overstating the population of Corvallis by ten thousand re- uh, residents, then we're probably also overstating, um, the number of individuals ages five through seventeen. You can go on that website again, back to the original data set and review their whole methodology. Um, and they have a page that is, um, quite extensive about, um, the margin of error related to that data set because it's all, um, estimates based on a bunch of other data sets coming, I think, from six different federal departments. And really that data set is used, um, for poverty calculations, not for student enrollment, not for birth rates or any of that information. Um, and so then looking at that data set, which I, I'm familiar with because it is what we use in that, um, the calculation, you'll see the poverty weight on the state school fund. So if you, then I took my wanderings from reviewing that and contacted Oregon Department of Education, um, and talked to, I don't know her position, um, specifically, I can't remember. But I talked to her, she works in the, um, finance, um, office. And so I kind of walked her through, um, my findings and, and she said, well, yeah, it's not, it's not be, to be used for enrollment information. It's used to calculate the poverty weight and to have a clear data set that, that creates proportionality across all districts, um, in the state. So it's the data set they have available to use for that. We used to use some different numbers, um, but with, for, related to poverty counts. But because of changes in, like, for example, free and reduced lunch, where we don't have free and reduced lunch because everyone's on CEP, um, that data set then is no longer available. And so since when we had some districts in the state on CEP, um, some on free and reduced and all these different programs, they had to move towards a common data set for all of it. So, um, I, the SAIP data set is a real data set. The, the, the report coming from Oregon Department of Ed is a real report, um, used for poverty calculations, not for enrollment and not based on birth rate data. Um, and I don't believe that data set applies to enrollment. Um, and the way that it's being communicated doesn't feel accurate to me, but that's my opinion.
Is it accurate to say she felt like our, our methodology was more accurate?
Yes, and she sent me, um, uh, sort of a, their FAQ page on that and what they're using it for. Um, and nowhere in there does it talk anything about enrollment. So, um, yeah, I mean, I don't, that's, that's about the extent of the information that I have on that. We do know that there are kids in Corvallis Boundary that do not go to Corvallis Schools. We know and have acknowledged that there are kids within Corvallis Boundary that go to private schools. We're not refuting that fact. Um, but the number is based on using that data is, uh, quite overstated.
Lauren, I, I looked up the acronym for SAIP.
Thank you.
It's just in case others want to look it up. It's Small Area Income and Poverty Estimates Program. So S A I P E, and when I just typed in SAIP program census, it popped right up.
Lauren, can you put that, a link to that FAQ on the page two to O D E? That way it's, um.
She sent me a PDF, but, uh, I, yes, I can.
Because I know you said it's fine, but it's not fine because these are big decisions we're making with numbers.
What, what did I say is fine?
Cause you were like, it's fine because how it was presented, I know it was like a statement, but I, I don't, I just wanted to point out it's not fine to, I'm not just saying that you were saying that it was fine literally, but I would like to say.
I might have some feelings about that, but, um.
Yeah, but it's not fine to misrepresent.
I don't feel like it's an, an accurate representation of data.
Um, I do feel like we are starting to drift a little bit away from budget. Um, so.
I just need to say, I need to step out and go pick up a high score.
Sure. Um, you had a question?
I do have a question, um, but first, thank you.
Kevin.
Thank you, Lauren. I don't know if anybody's officially thanked you for all of this amazing work, all the time you put into it, and also, um, just your ability to answer all our very tough questions and it's just, uh, I just really want to thank you for that because you are on top of things. You're on fire, and I appreciate it.
I stay up at night anticipating what you might ask me.
Um, it also pays to be at the end here because you've all asked all of my questions almost, so thank you very much. Tony, that was my big question, so you took that from me. Um, but I feel like that we've done a pretty good job, uh, ans- asking questions in which, um, where we've heard from our community, either the last meeting or we've, a, a lot of us have been reading different things on social media about what people are saying. And I feel like tonight we did a pretty good job referencing all of those except one. And that is on pay freezes. Um, people have asked about our, um, administrative team and our salary, our certified, classified. And I, so I have a question. Have our administration ta- team taken a pay freeze recently in the last four or five years?
Yes.
During.
COVID.
During COVID.
I don't know the exact year, but the answer is yes.
So you did take a freeze before, and did, has our union taken a pay freeze recently with cuts?
No.
And has our union asked for our admin to take a freeze? Like, have they requested that?
I don't believe so through leadership. Maybe individuals have said that in comment, but I don't believe that that's been a request of union leadership.
No.
Okay. I just want to kind of clarify all of that because, um, I also think that when we're hearing about some of these things, um, on social media and different comments, people aren't comparing, um, looking at admin pay with contract time. Like, they're not comparing apples to apples and comparing by hours. So I just want to make sure that when we're addressing like contracts and things like that in the budget, that we're also making it clear that most of our admin team work, you know, a lot longer. They have a longer contract than the regular, than certified.
Um, I would say, just for any community that's watching, I added an explanation to that, to the FAQ within the last week, um, to kind of explain how that process goes as far as how we determine contracts amount, contract amounts. And I think something that hasn't come up in the past, um, through this conversation is that, um, when we continually push for the, the freeze or the decrease in pay to be an administrators, what happens very quickly is you, you then get people who are supervising other employees that make more money than them. Um, and so it's, uh, sort of a misalignment between that, and then we have to correct that. Some of, and I'm, I don't want to discredit any work that any of our other staff are doing. Um, but prior to, we had to make a shift last year because, um, a teacher on the high end of the salary schedule was making more money than our assistant principals on an, uh, adjusted hourly, um, basis, which adjusted for contract days. And so I would say that there are additional. And so I would say that there are additional responsibilities that assistant principals have or any of our supervisory administrative staff have that are a little bit different. And so those are all different factors that piece into this. What we try to do is take the salaries, adjust for different, because all the contracts are different, right? So you have to adjust for how many paid holidays does this group have? Adjust that off the salary to make sure that that's even. How many calendar days do people work? All of those different things to factor in. And then there's additional things like licensure, education and different pieces like that. So when you break it out in that way, that is what informs the proposals that come forward on the salaries.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to make it clear, I'm not suggesting that anybody take a pay freeze. We did that years ago and it's not just a monthly hit, it's a lifelong hit. It hits everything. So I am not suggesting that at all. In fact, I really appreciate your comment earlier about how well our district values the people that work for us and, and teach our children. So I appreciate that and I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Sammy, did you have any?
It was just back in the, into the discussion of SAPE, I found the acronym, but also I found the confidence interval. First of all, SAPE does not count, it's a statistical model.
Correct.
And the statistical model appears to have a margin of error that is likely to go between, meaning true rate is likely to be between 19.2 and 25.6%. So I don't know if that's accurate.
It, it also plainly states on their website that it is not meant to be a proxy for enrollment data. So I don't, I think even they, the US Department of Education is even saying, this is not an appropriate data set for this question. I just want to put that out there. I think that's important for, if we're going to look at information. I think if the data set is telling us not to use it for this, we probably shouldn't be using it for that.
Thanks.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to add to that because I saw some graphs on social media and one of them used that dat- data, but for the projection for next year, they used your projection for enrolled students instead of the projection from the data, which was, there's a big discrepancy. And so if they were using all of the enrollment, or yeah, enrollment data from the other schools that they were comparing to, then it would not be accurate use of the data. So just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Any other questions on the budget?
Shauna.
Shauna?
I wrote some things down just to make sure as the hour gets a little later, thanks everyone for being here, that I was able to express myself clearly. So thank you, Lauren. Clearly so much work goes into the budget preparation, I know from you, your team and so many others across the district, all year round, not just in this moment. And I know you're, you're sitting here and just answering our questions, anticipating our questions. And just want to thank you so much for the careful and thoughtful and intentional work that goes into this and also recognizing all the pressure that gets pointed at you and hoping that you get to start sleeping well through the night soon also.
I told Ryan, I'm not coming tomorrow.
But just want to also acknowledge to the community and sticking to budget, that when there isn't enough funding for public education, there are no good decisions. That every decision is a hard decision and every decision is a challenging decision. And I also recognize that these decisions are constrained by state requirements, contract obligations. They're shaped by board goals as well as community input, hopefully to the degree possible from students, educators and families. And one of the things that I've heard, I know I, I wasn't physically here last week, I was on a plane, but did go back and listen to the public comment that came up, public comment tonight, as well as outreach that we're hearing from community members, whether it's walking around the dog park and having folks come up and say, hey, can I ask questions? Emails, phone calls, coffee shop meetings and grocery store run-ins. Just really appreciate community stepping forward with thoughts, with ideas, with concerns. And what I'm hearing loudly and clearly from everyone who has stepped into this space is that they want to understand how decisions are made, that they want to be part of a solution, that they are looking for ways to be creative together and to make sure that collectively as a board in a district, we're exploring all possible avenues to, to the degree possible, to save, preserve and even to expand, if and when possible, the programs that matter to them, that matter to their students, that keep their students coming to school, that bring that sense of belonging, that help families know that their students are wholly and fully supported. So I just want to acknowledge how much that means to also step back in these really, these moments that can sometimes feel contentious as a community of, that we're, we're battling over really hard decisions to say, I really believe as a community, we all want the same things. And if public education were fully funded, we'd all be voting for and, and supporting moving forward the same things that we all really care about. So along with that are some concerns that I've heard from the community that their voices don't matter because they don't necessarily see the changes or all of the process that really shows how their input throughout the year gets reflected in the budget document. Or something that I've heard over the last couple of weeks and with public testimony is worry that things like a family survey that comes out really shortly before the budget document comes out, that there wouldn't be sufficient time to really make sure all of that feedback was implemented into the budget. And from serving on the board for a couple of years now, I recognize that there's this difference in this time constraint of at this time of year, we have to pass a balanced budget. And also seeing that that budget actually changes over the year and that there are a lot of decisions that get made over the year that do then carry forward that feedback in different ways. And so for, just for transparency and accountability for the community, I have a couple of process questions that I thought would be helpful, I think, for us to hear as well as for the community here. And here's my, here's my brief list, however this comes out. One, can you share a little bit, or anyone district wide, around how the budget does continue to change and evolve throughout the year? We know that there are assumptions that are made and those assumptions change now, they change mid-year, they change all throughout. So there are lots of opportunities where that feedback that's coming in from the community potentially gets used, either if those assumptions are made worse or made better. Thinking about discretionary funding at schools, that those decisions continue to be made throughout the year with in, input from students, from staff, from community members. How else might that community feedback be used throughout the year so that, you know, there is a lot of pressure on this moment to pass a balanced budget? And that's not necessarily the same as knowing that a budget is going to change throughout the year as there are different needs and as different resources come available. So would just love to hear what are ways that community input is taken into account along the way? What are some of the examples of ways we see budgets shifting and changing throughout the year that integrates that feedback? And then my final piece of that is how can we as a district make sure the community sees that so that they know and also can feel valued in that process, more so than maybe some do now?
Yeah. So I would say that I'm not being dramatic to say that on a daily basis, we are making decisions around how we're spending our money. And it is a budget and like I mentioned earlier, it's already changed since this has been printed and those assumptions were adopted. So we've, we are continually looking at that. I know that there was criticism around the survey. There was also criticism last year when I didn't do the survey. I was reading all 443 of those responses on a daily basis and a large amount of them actually were fairly unkind and hard to read and doing that on a daily basis. I then engaged with leaders in our cabinet team to help put together the report, which we, we tried to do in the most thorough way and so there was engagement around that. We are looking at that information and implementing as many things as we can. When I did a, a rough estimate, we spend over 50% of our available funds on those top five priorities from, that, that community gave us. And so I'm not saying that we can't do better on the community engagement and using that feedback. That's consistently a, a work in progress, not just for budget, but just in general. But I do believe that we made a, a genuine effort to, to do better this year and I will do better again next year. But we use that information at all times. There's other ways that we gain information through youth truth, right? We use that data. The board goals were not developed in isolation. That was the culmination of a lot of community input that then helped guide what those board goals should be. And at the end of the day, that's where we're going to. I mean, we have, you heard at the dinners, the, well, scorecard dinners now, that, that we have with our different levels. You heard how every single thing that they're, every single goal that they have in their building is then aligning back to the board goals and those were all informed with community input. Unfortunately, we're not in a situation where we're, we're talking very frequently about what things we can add back. And having more money is just not a problem that we've, we've had recently. But I mean, I, I still look at that information and when we're having conversations, we meet on a generally weekly basis with our executive team. We meet in our leadership team, which includes all of our building, school site administrators and our cabinet team that meets with all of the district level leadership. And we're constantly looking at that information to say like, is this decision in alignment with this feedback that we got? And I would say, I know I haven't been here very long, four years, but in this year I have heard more conversations about, nope, we're not doing that, it doesn't align with the input that we received for our, what we should be focused on. So we're not doing it. And that conversation can be hard, especially if it's something that we've done for a long time. But yeah, I mean, we're, we're constantly looking at that information and I, it's unfortunate that it felt like it, it wasn't, people weren't heard, that was not my intent. At the end of the day, I am also one individual that was trying and that was our best, best attempt this year at that and it will be better next year too.
Thank you, Lauren. And also I thank you for all the things you're doing. I think there has been such a huge shift also this year. You said with the community budget meeting, with the tremendous amount of time and hours you've put into the community FAQ as well as answering questions for community. And I think it's indicative of just our ongoing as a district, as a board, as individuals in this process. Not meaning to point it all at you in terms of community, continue to ask of communication transparency. How do we do that collectively as a district? So thank you for all that you're doing to help support that.
I would also say that work is generally led by district office staff and those are the people that, that can do that work in a large scale. So then we also get the opposition of where we should be cutting staff that work here and that makes it really difficult to continue to do that work at the depth that we would like to do it. So there's a whole bunch of opposing thoughts and it's hard to balance it all out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, it's 10 o'clock. We've asked all the questions, there's only a couple of things left to do and then we can call it. So at this point, I'd be willing to entertain maybe some motions.
You have a script if you would like to make a motion and don't have that language in your hair.
This is definitely something that I am not allowed to do myself. Somebody else has to do it for me. I mean, nobody here is getting paid. We can't stay here all night if nobody wants to make the motion to get all this done. Or I guess we could all then have to come back next Thursday for 20 minutes to get it all done. But even then, I still need motions. Otherwise, we're just going to sit here all night.
I guess it's hard to make a motion because there's so much involved in this. And I just feel like with community input and all that, I'm struggling personally to make, to make any kind of decision on this.
Well, then we can have a motion to adjourn till next Thursday and so we can have a week to sleep on it and think on it and then come back and vote on it then, if that's what people would want to do.
That's, that's just me.
I mean, I'm, I'm wanting to make a motion, but I just wanted to let the community know, like, I make this motion. It's not to say I don't appreciate comments and I don't appreciate the work that's being done. I just feel like there's a lot to think about still and, not to say that I don't agree with the budget or anything, but I would like to move that we come back next week.
A second.
Okay, we have a duly made and seconded motion to adjourn for tonight and come back next week to officially pass the budget. I don't think I need a roll call for this one, so.
Discussion?
Yeah. So at this point, is there any discussion?
I would like just to ask maybe a point of clarification between now and next week if there's further questions from the members or further input from the community. How is that going to be channeled between now and next meeting?
There's no further opportunity for public comment at the meeting next week, but if you have questions, you can email me. As you're wanting to wait until next week, I would like to know what information you need from me in order to feel confident in making a decision before that point.
And maybe Lauren, if I may, before maybe we address that one, is it okay to procedurally, shall community members reach out to board at Corvallis, that's K-12, that's OR, that's US on a budget matter? Not as a public comments bias, input to the board? Could we disseminate that to the full budget committee if it is related to the budget? Would that be a good way for members to reach out if they would like to?
Is that allowed, Kim?
You can process, yes.
Again, it, you can, they can ask questions next week, I'm assuming. This is my first year.
Well, I just, I don't know what the, I don't know the forwarding the board email to outs, like outside members, I don't know. So that's a fine thing to do if that's within.
I don't, I don't understand what was asked, I'm sorry.
What I'm asking is, it's two, two, uh, two factors for this motion. If we're going to sleep on it, there might be two factors. Either we did not get enough information that we need to ask and that's what you're asking us.
Yeah, if you're not, if you're not wanting to make a motion now, my assumption means that you don't have enough information in order to make a decision. So I would like to be able to provide you with that and be prepared for that for next week.
Correct. And the second factor is if community members, if we would like to hear more from the community beyond what we heard today, that would be another factor that might be motivating the motion to have an extra week. And if that's the factor, I want to make sure we have uniform access to that input for all budget members. So that's why I want to uplift that in this discussion.
I don't know that we would gather everybody's emails and send it out. It's this, I would view that as the same as like if somebody is reaching out with questions about the budget like normal. Is it, would it be different in this case?
If there would be questions that came into the board that then Board Chair you directed to me to answer related to budget, then I would then put that into the, I would answer it and put it into the FAQ.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would think any, any questions provided to any member of this board from a member of the community could be forwarded to Lauren.
If you give me that directive, then I can do that.
I, I so direct.
No, not you.
Would that be helpful to direct you to do that? Yeah, maybe. Okay, then yeah. I just wanted to also say that it's not that I don't feel confident in your work and everything that went into it. It's more around, I have been reached out to a lot and I would like to know if the questions that have been posed to me that as a voted person in the community have been, like if it's been answered, you know what I mean? If that makes sense, if it made, if I, if I asked the questions on behalf of the community in the way they expect me to as an elected leader, if that makes sense. And so it's not that I'm saying to ask me more questions, it's more, I feel like we're in a really hard place, if that makes sense. And I think we've been sitting here for hours and it's, I really appreciate your work and I don't want us to just vote on something because it's late and have been sitting for here for hours and don't want to come back to vote on it. I just... and don't want to come back to vote on it. I just, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it's just, I don't, um, I need the information of, I guess, what would change in between this week and next week, like, that I could provide to you to make you feel more confident. And the conversation around budget, I just want to be clear too, doesn't end just because a budget is approved. Um, that should be a constant dialogue that's happening on a, like, all year round. And I'm happy to have those conversations, um, with, whether it's the board or the budget committee or, um, the community individually as well. So, I mean, whatever feels comfortable to you, but I would like, if I need to provide you with more information to help inform your decision, um, I'm happy to do that.
I don't think I need more information for you to bring back. And I would also just like to add, like, the motion isn't even approved. Was, like, if people can say no, and then they can put a new motion forward, I was just, like, Andrew's like, "We need to make a motion", and that's the one I thought of, so, that felt good to me, so.
Can I add a point? Uh, Teresa first and then you, yeah?
I, I guess I would like to also echo that it's not that I think there's new information that I would be looking for, it's that, um, you, uh, the, the team here, they answered very thoroughly a lot of questions. And I sat a long time with the budget book, and I've sat only for minutes with some of the answers to the questions. And so I think I'm looking for some space to be able to process and kind of, um, catalog some of this information into, um, a way that makes sense for me, not because I think that there's something that you-